Excuse me. We can't hear online, could you check and see if something's on?
There.
I muted.
There we go. There we go. It's a better.
If you're asking me a question, I can't hear you.
It's you.
Okay, can you hear us now?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Franklin.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Alright, then get it to just.
Thank you, okay. Do you need to repeat any of the I basically just said the rules of speaking, so you can read that on the agenda. And we asked for fire department, Honolulu fire department, if they're online. Doesn't look like they are, so we table them for now, and we will be having Honolulu police department if they're online.
I don't know, so I guess.
Oh, they're not on as well, may person are online?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we will also table Honolulu police department for now until the either of them show up. Um, and we have board of water supply, I believe Iris Oda.
Here, listen.
You'll be here. So you can speak towards it.
You can all look at me. Yes. Hi there. So I just have one general announcement. Uh, July is smart irrigation month. Beginning of peak demand for outdoor water use, and the summer heat kicks in and spring desiccu into overdrive. That's what's happening with July for us. Uh, so be water smart this July, check for leaky and misdirected springer heads. Water early in the morning to reduce evaporation. Attach a shut-off nozzle to your garden hose to avoid waste. Install a weather-based irrigation controller, and that's eligible for a BW's rebate. Tap your rainwater in a rain barrel, and that's also eligible for a rebate. So smarter irrigation helps keep your landscape clean and will lower your water pressure. So, go to boardofwatersupply.com/irrigation for more tips and tips. Okay, and now moving to the main break. So we have one main break in June. Uh, for your neighborhood board was on June 6th near 1854 Me Me Alcoro Road. Uh, was an 8-H pipe in that area. And I had, I don't have the answers for last month's meeting, so address it next month. And I did get a Did you have the question? If there's any questions?
Oh, is there any questions from the board online or in person, Mr. Song?
So, Mr. Hamilton, the principal Kalii Elementary School did mention that your driveway with the map that he gave me with the picture, the uh road is deteriorating and you can actually see the dirt. And if you could uh please pack it for the kids.
Yes, thank you for the map, and I'll put this to you, we can help lines. Thank you. Any more questions from the board online or in person? If not, any questions from the community online or in person for board of water supply seeing and hearing now, thank you so much, Iris.
Thank you. See you next month.
See you next month.
See you next month.
Okay. And now, we will be moving on to our initial convening, uh meeting um agenda items, so actually it's not on here, but I did wanna swear in anyone who has not been sworn in already. Um, do you have the list of people by any chance?
Uh, well, I could just read it as a group.
Okay, and then.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, uh, board member Mizuno, board member Franklin, board member Gotti, and board member La La Maga, yeah.
Right, and. Okay, so they can sign off, is that correct?
Oh, no, it's okay, I could just, I could read it, um, and then they can uh they can join in uh and repeat after me.
Or you say.
So, uh, I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I that I will faithfully support the constitution.
That I will faithfully support the constitution.
And faithfully support. Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
The constitution and laws
The constitution and laws.
The constitution and laws.
Of the state of Hawaii.
Of the state of Hawaii.
Of the state of Hawaii.
The charter the charter and laws
Charter and laws.
Charters and laws.
Of the city of Honolulu.
Of the city of Honolulu.
Of the city of Honolulu.
And the provisions
And the provisions.
And the provisions. And the provisions.
Of the neighborhood plan.
Of the neighborhood plan.
Of the neighborhood plan.
And I will consciously
And I will consciously
uh discharge my duties
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
To the best of my ability
To the best of my ability.
As a member of the neighborhood board.
As a member of the neighborhood.
As a member of the neighborhood board.
To which I've been elected.
To which I've been elected.
To which I've been elected.
Okay, and thank you very much, and we appreciate you so much.
Thank you, everyone, and next we will go on to election of officers. So that will be for chair, uh vice chair, secretary and treasurer. So we will start with the chair. Um, any nominations for the chair? Uh, Mr. Lealoah?
I nominate Lealoah.
I second it.
Okay, first by Lu, uh, Mr. Lealoah, second by Mr. Song. Um, are there any more nominations at this time?
I nominate May Mizuno.
Oh, Mr. Franklin nominates May Mizuno, Mr. Rojas second.
Second.
Are there any more nominations for chair? Uh, I will make a quick nomination for Mr. James Song. Okay, and so it's been seconded by me, um, any second?
Uh uh, I don't thi- I think it's okay with no second.
Yes, okay.
Okay, well, you will interrogate it, yeah, okay, and then.
Okay.
So, please. Board member Tuvaga, yeah, or uh, Sue, okay. Okay, and then would you like to call the
Yeah, so we can call the vote, um.
Okay, so, uh, I'll do, I guess, a roll call vote, and then I guess, please say the name of the person
Wait, ma- Ms. Chair, can I say something?
Yes.
This is May Mizuno.
Hi.
Hi, thank you so much for your trust, Mr. Franklin, and at this, at this moment, I would like to um respectfully decline. And so, I would say close the nomination for chair, Lealoah, thank you.
I did still nominate you if you want to.
Okay.
You just take it.
I just take it.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that's all, okay, you got it.
Okay, so Mr. Song, well, we're still gonna vote, but um, Mr. Song will just say he withdraws.
Okay. Okay.
And then, so, so we're, right now, the motion on the table is that we are gonna vote for uh Lealoah Tuvaga to be chair. And then, so when I do the roll call vote, uh, just, uh, aye or no, or abstained. Okay, uh, board member, uh, Franklin?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, board member Gotti?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, board member Kumalai?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, board member La La Maga?
Aye.
Aye. Board member May Mizuno? Uh, you're muted.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, board member, uh, Rojas?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, board member Sue?
Aye.
Okay, uh, board member Tan is absent, and uh, board member Tuvaga?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you, everyone, I'll just say quickly, um, thank you, everyone, for voting, I wasn't sure if I should still continue or not. Means a lot, but um, we will move on now to um voting for vice chair, um, any nominations for vice chair?
I nominate James Song.
Oh. Mr. Franklin nominates James Song, we don't need a second chair, just nomination. Okay, so anyone else would like to nominate first vice chair, you can nominate yourself, right?
Good.
If you'd like to nominate yourself, you can.
Ms. Chair?
Oh, yes, I'm a Miss Mizuno.
I nominate, uh, Mike Gotti for vice chair.
Okay. All right, so Mr. Gotti for vice chair, so we have Gotti and Mr. Song. Um, any more nominations? If not, then we can close nominations and we'll vote um for vice chair for Mr. Song or Mr. Gotti.
Okay, yeah, so I'll do the same roll call again, uh, but this time, please vote for Gotti, Sue, or I guess abstained, or yeah. Uh, board member Franklin?
Song.
Sue, okay, uh, board member Gotti?
I don't think it's me.
Okay. Uh, board member Kumalai?
Uh, Sue.
Sue, okay, uh, board member La La Maga?
Gotti.
Gotti, okay, uh, board member May Mizuno?
Mike Gotti.
Gotti.
Okay, board member Rojas?
My Gotti.
Gotti. Uh, board member Sue?
I guess myself.
Okay. Uh, Tan, and then, board member, uh, Tuvaga.
Um, vote James Song.
Okay, oh, I guess this is
It's tied.
Yeah, it's a
It's still tied.
Uh, one, yeah, it is gonna be a tie without Mr. Tan, so um I don't know actually what to say here, it's okay.
We don't vote. Yeah, we vote.
Okay, revote then. All right, uh, board member Franklin?
Mike Gotti.
Okay. Board member Gotti?
Me.
Okay, board member Kumalai?
Uh, good Gotti.
Okay. Board member La La Maga?
Um, Gotti.
Okay, board member May Mizuno?
Mike Gotti.
Okay. Gotti, uh, board member Rojas?
My Gotti.
Gotti, board member Sue?
It's Will Gotti.
Okay. And uh, Chair Tuvaga?
Michael Gotti.
Okay, well, this time.
We have our vice chair, Michael Gotti, thank you. And um, now we will vote for secretary, any nominations for secretary?
Now, May Mizuno.
James Song.
All right. Okay, James Song has been nominated for secretary, anyone else would like to nominate another board member?
I mean, Chris.
No.
Oh. Chris, would you like to?
I, I, I would respectfully decline.
Decline, oh, okay, okay, okay.
I think we're drawn, I hope, thank you.
Okay, if that's it, um, if it's just James Song for secretary, then we will, um, close nominations and we will do a vote.
Okay. Board member Franklin?
Sue.
Or aye, yeah.
Aye.
Uh, I think, board member, uh, Gotti?
Uh, Sue.
Okay, uh, Sue, okay, board member Kumalai?
Aye.
Aye. Board member La La Maga?
Aye.
Aye. Board member May Mizuno?
Aye.
Aye, board member Rojas?
Aye.
Aye. Board member Sue?
Aye.
Aye. Uh absent, and Chair Tuvaga?
Aye.
Thank you so much, so now we have our second. And last but not least, uh nominations for treasurer, are any nominations, uh, minor in person?
Ms. Chair?
Oh, yes, May Mizuno.
Um, I wanna nominate Mr. Alan Kumalai as treasurer.
Okay, so Alan Kumalai as treasurer? And are there any are there any more nominations for treasurer? Did you have a anything to say? Okay. If that's, if we have no more nominations for treasurer, then we can vote on Alan Kumalai as treasurer, aye, it's our names, our states.
Okay, yes, uh, board member Franklin?
Aye.
Aye, board member Gotti?
Gotti.
Board member Kumalai?
Aye.
Aye. Board member La La Maga?
Aye.
Aye. Board member Mizuno?
Aye.
Aye, board member Rojas?
Aye.
Aye. Board member Sue?
Aye.
Okay. Board member Tuvaga?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Okay, we already have it, we have treasurer, secretary. And now, we will be moving on to meeting determination of daytime location. So, I think the location is probably the main thing that we change. So I understand some people want to have it closer to Kalii Valley, like maybe an elementary school, so I did follow up with um, I don't know if you had any updates from what you told me, but yeah, schools, or even maybe city and counties, um parks and rec, right, cuz that's technically free with the city and county system. Um, but, so are we in agreement, at least with the date and time? Second Wednesday at 7:00 PM, we can always start earlier, later, or we can always do a different date, cuz I know you mentioned you couldn't meet on Wednesdays, I'm glad you're here. Thank you. I see you're here, are you okay with second Wednesdays or other days, we better.
Well, I'm not going to the other kind of day.
Yeah.
It's nice if it change, but I'm not gonna make you guys all change for me.
No, I mean, if Thursday nights happen to be better, I know we had our last meeting Thursday, if that happened to be better, maybe Friday next day. Um
Too bad about you for missing.
Yeah, I just wanted to at least
But thank goodness.
Oh, I think it's Um, but yeah, you guys want what, second Wednesdays?
Yep.
Or any other suggestion? 7:00 PM, second Wednesdays, okay, we will keep that. Um, any location changes, or do you act, you guys actually really like it here?
Be nice to you.
Yeah. Yeah, I have a question about the time.
What is that?
Uh, earlier, oh, Brandon, these uh, most meetings are started at 7:00.
Anybody starts early?
Yeah, um, 6:00, or the people that start, yeah, early is 6:00.
6:00 plus 6:00.
6:00 or 6:30.
Yeah, 6:00, 6:00 or 6:30, anyways, we do have the 6:30, 30 minutes around there.
I mean, I can, well, I can come anytime, but just thinking about people that work before that 6:30 is still uh, able to attend earlier. I mean, 7:00 is fine, but sometime a bit early might
Help with.
Get, get us started.
Yeah.
And I'm like Alan. Oh. I, I don't have any uh family or kids to worry about, but for the people that work and have children, you might wanna ask them to voice their opinion. Cuz me and Alan's retired, so we can come anytime, but if you got a job and you getting off, and you have kids, and anybody on the board that uh should make, mention it, 6 o'clock is too early for them to get off, get through traffic, and get there on time.
Yes. Current time is definitely better, it's
7:00 PM is better for you?
Yeah, doesn't work.
Okay. So you prefer the 7:00 PM, okay.
Yeah, I think that's funny, we meet once.
Yeah, okay.
But this was curious.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
All right.
So stick to the 7:00 PM. Yeah, and then, location, we can talk about the location.
Are there definite other options?
We can definitely have other options with, um, is okay ask community.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, could you have been, uh, who wanted to say something else?
Yeah, before the break, you were hearing talks with the district park, with the town?
Um, somewhere, just not about the location, I did ask, um, Brandon.
That was, that was location for meeting.
That was the location, then, did you get a response?
Oh, um, I, you know, it's, in general, um, as soon as we uh get, and I see board member Franklin's hand up, uh, in general, when we, we get the community response or the board response, um, we can, we can, we'll definitely begin to look at, and it should be approved, it's just that there's a lot of logistical issues involved with changing it over, and you know, it, it might only, it takes about maybe a month or so, but or, or so, but then, um, yeah, but once we change it, then it would be uh kind of a big hassle to change it back, so just to get the feedback and be confident that this is what you would like for this term.
Cuz this, this was talked about months ago, and I saw the sign by the school the other day for the meeting, so I just was wondering if it had moved.
Oh.
No.
Oh, no, 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 we just want to stay.
So, or
But Kaiwai?
Yeah.
Where I put there.
See, that's why I, that's why I thought it moved, so, or
No. Doesn't mean it's there. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I give you a new sign? Uh? Can I get you a new sign?
Oh, we, we had the new signs, yeah?
Yep, we do, I have an extra one at you.
A sign?
No, the, the sign doesn't
But Uh, Mr. Franklin?
Say the location, just the second Wednesday of the month, and QR code that you uh get, and then I'll give you the details.
Yeah. Yeah, so just to clarify the signs are up, just to spread word about our meetings, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it doesn't have the specific locations, that's always something that's gonna always probably change, um. Uh, Mr. Franklin actually has his hand up, are you okay with?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, Mr. Franklin?
Yes. We're changing location, but every time since I've been on the board, we changed locations, we had to accommodate to like the school, they didn't have enough, they had to get out at 8:00 or 10:00, or things of that nature, and then we gotta look at the the financial responsibility that uh they might encourage to get that location, when this place is free, and we can go our meeting and pass our time if we have to, if something important, so when we change locations, I know we're looking at accommodation of getting it in our area, but the location should accommodate our meeting from 7:00 to 9:30, and most places will not, because they need people to lock up and do things, that's something we should take in consideration, when we wanna get closer without uh without changing our meeting time schedule to accommodate them when we can stay here and we can do what we wanna do, that's my opinion, but, thank you.
Thank you. And I wanted us to stay here for the summer because of the crazy because days ago, I wanted to be here for the summer, but since it's gonna become win, um, uh, fall, oh, yes, it's July.
Brandon, you said that, yeah, in the future, we can change? We, we can stay here for a while until we find
Uh, a location that can accommodate what Mr. Franklin addressed. Place.
Yeah.
You know, staying later if we need to.
Yeah, but like, yeah, for some reason, if you change, and then like, oh, two months later, you don't like it, then that would be a hassle to
Yeah. Yeah, 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 so we gotta really, uh, make sure that we want to move to that location.
But, but yes, in, in general, yeah, the neighborhood board will, uh, you just name the, you just, um, if the board uh puts in a motion for they wanna, you guys wanna change location, we'll definitely begin investigating, yeah.
It doesn't have to be decided tonight.
And it doesn't have to be, anytime during the term.
Okay.
So you guys, if you guys are all comfortable with staying at Kalii Palama, then we can keep it.
Yeah, I like staying here, but I, I can see a point where the meeting should be in the neighborhood that we represent. And if we can find a place that can accommodate our hours, I mean, the time they will wanna meet, then I would say with air conditioning.
With air conditioning, yeah. All right, so it's not, oh, yeah. Oh, so we have Mr.
But didn't you just say it's a city, that's a city, that's why it's state and city, so the school is a state, and the city is a rec center, so it will be working within the same jurisdiction of the location, so it should accommodate what we
No.
For we.
Not always, yeah, it depends, it depends on the whoever has this city department. Yeah, it, it would depend on the city department and their rules and facility rules as well. And parking, and, and internet access, and other thing, yeah.
And the Wapati had
Uh, I just wanted to add on, but I think it's nice for the summer to have it here, but I think we should be in our community, because look, we can't even fit everybody in this room. Right, I thought we're supposed to be working for the community, not for ourselves. We think we so, we should, we should be in the community, cuz I remember where they used to be by uh, the, the gym up at, um, we call it Do Gym.
Yeah.
They used to be upstairs, and I remember when Papa Redrinks was here, and Mr. Babas, I used to go to those meetings as well. But then, there's a lot of people, so we should be in the community, so we can hear the concerns from the community. Like, we can't even get the whole community from the valley that come down this side, right, we should be listening to them. So we should go to them versus try and serve ourselves in this beautiful air condition. You know, we gotta get to those people and listen to their concerns, cuz I've been hearing a lot where the Kalii Valley, they feel like they're being isolated, like they're not being heard, and that's the exact same comments I get every time where I talk to parishioners or uh neighbors, they feel like they're being isolated, like no one's hearing them out, so we gotta go to the community, because this is a community uh board meeting, it's supposed to be for the community and not for just us.
Yeah, unfortunately, the rec center is not open.
So we gotta find something.
I mean Yeah.
You gotta go to the community, not stay away from the
Um, cards?
Cards. So, as someone that is a board member, it is hard, we've been trying to look for a place in the community, Palama, and it's still hard to find a venue, DOE has its own logistical thing. Um, other areas such as private schools or churches also have their own logistical errors, that they're not willing to host us. This is, I'm sorry to say that this is the most accessible place so far logistically, and also city-wise, with also the time given. Uh, because we also need someone to clean up the new stadium, and that's really hard to find, um, asking very late at night, so just make, making aware about the logistics.
Well, you have a state representative, a council representative that's here. They should work with you guys. Yeah, as a community member, that's, yeah, that's true. But, why you isolating the community members? Right, the state representative, the senators, they're in this meeting, they can hear you. So they, they, they need to work on behalf of you guys as well as a board.
Mr. Franklin, uh, has his hand up, I believe?
Yes, uh, Ms. Pate, we, we have been looking, but no one will accommodate us, but anybody in the community that can go out and help us find a location, we would appreciate it, I mean, that will accommodate our hours, so not just put on us, not for our comfort, it's because this is the best place we can get that will not restrict our time. But if any community member can find a place that will give us the time inside the community, please help us out, we'd be more than happy to go there, that's what we're saying, this is the best place for us, not for our comfort. We have gone to schools, we have been other places, and we have always been ran out. So, if you can find a place, please help us find a place, we would appreciate it, thank you.
You think about that, you know, we lost us?
We can. We can. We just gotta get out there, I, I understand what Mr. Randy is saying, right, but we got elected officials here. We just gotta get out there, I I understand what Mr. Randy is saying, right, but we got elected officials here, so why are we using them? Yeah, and I I hear it, I hear you guys saying that we tried, we tried, we tried, but then again you you we're getting away from what the purpose of this organization is for, was for the community.
We will talk about this a lot more, we gotta move forward, but.
I understand, yeah, but you gotta do it for the community, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah.
Awesome. Oh, Mr.
You know, for the first time, as we hear the um you know um the the citizens around this area, which is is great, it's a a good um a conversation as far as communication, work with the neighborhood board, and also what he brought up, to work with the officials, this that's amazing. Um, and any more concerns from, you know, from the citizens of of Kalii Valley, I mean we're just welcome to say something right now, this is like I said, this is the first time really we really hear them coming out, so.
Yeah.
Yes, that's awesome.
And to echo, of course, what Mr. Franklin said, we've tried, but we can always try again, like this times will be different, um hopefully venues will be different and will open up more, so it doesn't hurt to try again, so I do thank you for speaking up and um bringing up concern, especially what they were saying cause we don't we don't know what we don't know, so bringing it up, at least one person saying it is more than enough, but is is enough to keep trying again, so thank you. And um for for um for now, I believe, we will, I will we'll definitely see, I wanna check out the gym, cause the what is it called, the Kalii Valley District Gym, cause that's with the city and county, it's free. I just don't know about the time, I think that's the only thing that I'm worried about, but I think that would be an ideal place if we could do um gym, we'll just try to see the logistics and everything, but um for now, it will um our meeting will probably be here in the meanwhile, or.
Oh, so we should vote on the the motion, I guess the details are the the same as last term, second Wednesday, seven P M, same location.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
The location.
For now, yeah, for now.
Should I add that to the to the like to vote in?
Yeah, yeah, this is too.
Okay.
Yeah, uh but for now, I guess the the for tonight's purpose is uh meeting determination, date, time, location, um uh we are keeping the same de- we're voting on the same details as last term. So I'll begin the roll call vote, uh board member Franklin.
Aye.
Aye, board member David.
Aye.
Aye, board member Kulaan.
Aye.
Aye, board member Luwalaanda.
Aye.
Aye, uh board member Mizuno.
Oh, you're mute.
I'm here.
Okay.
Are we voting, sorry?
Yes, we're voting for the same details, um yes, okay.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, board member Rojas.
Yes.
Board member Sung.
Aye.
Aye, uh and Chair Luwala, oh, to vote there.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you everyone for voting, so for now, the details um are the same, but if we try to get a new location, we can vote on that, um I'll get that on the transition as soon as possible figure out the logistics behind, um outside of the mood. But thank you everyone for voting on that, next will be determination of board recess schedule, so it's just May and December, right? Or.
Oh yeah, board recess is yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So determination of board recess schedule is usually month of May and month of December, I did hear June and December, if that's a better.
Well, I was gonna mention that you guys do have a scheduling conflict in November, the eleven 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 falls on Veterans Day, which is also the second Wednesday.
Mm-hmm.
So perhaps consider recessing in November, or I guess.
Yeah, in March, December.
Yeah.
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 If that's a possibility too, at least for this, cause I think next month, we can vote again on.
Yeah, or actually this could be to be even in next term, so I take it that, but um twenty twenty six, anyway, uh sorry.
Oh, twenty twenty six, oh, okay, so.
Yeah, actually maybe uh so uh Jokuga. Yeah, this will.
Oh, okay, that's for next year, but so we can keep, are you guys okay with May and December or do you prefer June and December recess? Any comments, questions?
December.
Definitely December.
Definitely December, okay.
May and December be fine.
Okay, December. Okay. May and December, and then May and May have birthdays in May, so we prefer to, I I believe we have that same May recess, but anyone else prefer June or anything? No? Okay, so then we'll vote on the same May and December um recess day, a month.
Uh and if it we can also keep it more casual too, like you can just say here no objection if you want to show hands.
Oh, okay, just hearing no objections, um we can just show hands or you can click the raise hand icon if you agree, is that correct?
Yeah, or if that vote just assumed, I, yeah, you.
Okay, is this as an assumed I then?
Right, you and I.
Right, you and I.
Right, okay. Thank you everyone, okay, now we're moving on to adoption of oral testimony rules. Um, so the rules of speaking, right, okay. Yeah, so adoption of oral testimony rules, um any um question or changes to the rules? Are you okay with um the rules that we have currently, we do, then we can just vote on that. Okay, so we'll just vote on the rules that we have currently, I means.
Or just.
Or the un- am I hearing a unanimous I?
Oh, yes.
In the board?
Yeah, oh, uh Mr. Franklin is.
Oh, Mr. Franklin, you have your hand up, yes.
The rules is three to five minutes, right? Cause you didn't mention what the rules were.
Oh, so rules of speaking, it's the rules of speaking on our agenda, so um speakers are encouraged to keep their comments under two minutes and those giving reports are encouraged to keep their reports under three minutes.
I I rather say three minutes and and three to five, cause we go past two minutes anyway, I've never seen a two-minute speech, but we might wanna make it three and five, we can go between three and five and two and five, you can take a vote.
Okay, so adding on five like as up to most utmost five minutes to the rules, okay. You would you would like that, okay, so we will vote on the adoption of adding two to five and three to five and the rules of speaking. Okay, so we'll do an eyes, knees, or abstain vote.
Did you wanna just pick two two to five, let's just vote, or just amend it to two to five minutes and let's vote on that.
Or or did you? Oh. Oh, one at a time?
Yes.
Or uh or just just.
That would be fine.
Or I guess did did you wanna have everybody pick like the out of the three options or did you just wanna um say like we're just gonna amend the oral testimony rules from right now, two to five?
Yes, that would be better.
Oh, of the.
There.
Two to five.
Oh, yes, uh may use it up.
I'm okay with either two or five, but strictly impose the time limit, please, thank you.
Okay. Got it, okay, we'll strictly impose the time limit, utmost five minutes. Um, so it should be changed, the comments under two minutes as well as the portion of reports under three minutes to two to five minutes, is that correct?
I guess like alright.
Or we doing one at a time, that's what I'm doing.
Oh, I guess Mr. Franklin is saying um make the first one two to five and make the second one three to five.
Oh, yeah, that's what I was.
And then and then, yeah, yeah, okay, and then and then en- enforce strictly.
Yes, yes, and strictly two five minutes, yeah.
So that's the motion on the table.
Yes, basically adding on the two five minutes to vote. And should we should we do a unanimous, well.
Yes.
In unanimous, yes, then, from the board?
Yes, yeah, yes.
You're not hearing any abstain or no names, right, okay, so that's the case, then we can do a, oh. Uh, may, did you still wanna say anything or I think you have your hand up, but um or maybe zero?
I think that was the impulse.
One, okay, yeah. Okay, so and then this is an unanimous yay from everyone to add the two five, okay, and we'll strictly enforce the five minutes.
Yes.
Your vice chair, if you can help me with the enforcing functions.
My question.
Oh, sorry, so sorry.
It's a it's a huge job.
Vice chair. Okay, okay, vice chair, um if you'd like, if you're able to keep time
He did.
Sure.
up to the five minutes, if you don't use my iPad, that's, thank you everyone, okay, perfect. Okay, so we'll do that in the unanimous, okay, thank you everyone. So that will be the adoption of the oral testimony rules. Uh, is it, is that correct, okay, uh and then now we're move on to establish regular order about for agenda. Which is basically city monthly reports and then usually I think it's the Yeah, so this is the regular um order of like presentations, then the um I don't have the exact order, cause I think I put this in a certain order, but yeah, just any any objection to the regular order of the meetings? Anything moves up or down? Seeing here in uh oh, it's Mr. Rojas, yeah. Jen, you didn't.
Further for um improvements or discussions?
Yeah, 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 we can, you can discuss, yeah, Mr. Rojas has something to.
I mean like, not at this time, but maybe something in the future.
Change. Oh, yeah, yeah, we can bring it up in the future too, we don't have this, yeah, we can change it in the future if something could, but.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, and then Mr. Franklin.
Oh, yes, Mr. Franklin, you have your hand up.
Yes, I would like to add a suggestion, even though the chair gets to pick our agenda, maybe at every meeting a board member can bring up what the chair should consider uh in there like agenda suggestions. And uh uh at the very end, the chair has the chair report and I would like that every board member if they have anything to say, they can say it before the chair speaks and then the chair gets a final word on it, uh and the last thing is make sure that every committee uh reports because I don't understand why a committee doesn't report that committee activity every month to the chair. I it's like having employees that don't tell you what they're doing every month, either they didn't do anything or they did something like it used to be. Uh those are what I believe because committee should work, we're working for the community, not ourselves and we should say what we are doing every month to uh enrich our community or enhance our community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. um Mr. Franklin, um okay, so
I guess.
The committee, oh, sorry.
Yeah, so for is Mr. Franklin's first comment, I guess I don't necessarily think that one needs to be voted on, cause you can just, it's gonna be the same location you would just add maybe chair report and other reports to each agenda, um and then we'll we'll address committees at the at the on the next agenda item number eight.
Well, so the committee reports, it's um only reported when you have your agenda?
But I can I can I can comment more, but I think that would that can be saved for number eight.
And. The committees, okay.
Yeah, yeah, um cause I can I can kinda comment on the NCO policy, I think Mr. Franklin is talking about.
Got it, and then suggestions of what to put on the agenda, you guys, everyone's welcome to email me or even call me, text me if you wanna add anything to the agenda, I'll do it, work on it as soon as I can, you just have to call, text me a week or two before, a week before our meeting, if that makes sense, cause I have to submit it by Wednesday, oh, Mr. Franklin has that up, yes, Mr. Franklin.
Well, wait, this meeting, another thing we need to talk about is because what you just mentioned is under Robert rules and this board is not functioning under Robert rules, we're functioning under the sunshine law which have us take a a video and take a test every month, the Robert rule is tense, it's a really thick book and most of the board has not read it and it could hold you liable for a misdemeanor. Uh, so I don't know why anybody would vote on the Robert rule on a book you have not read, that can hold you civilly uh penalty liable for something. So the sunshine rules is what this board is functioning on, that's what we watch the video on and that's what we take the test on. I read the laws and the Robert rules is 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 we have to vote on going under the Robert rules, what we which we have never done. So people keep bringing up the Roberts rules, but we are not, we're not buying by the Roberts rules. So if you read all the bylaws coming in from the the mayor's office, if you the board but the board can vote to use Robert rules which holds you liable for something you have not read. So many committees reporting like when I first started, the committees, whether you put an agenda out or not, should report to the chair whether you did anything. But since they picked up the Roberts rule, that's not correct, and I wrote a I I wrote to Lloyd and I contacted the the attorney for the IPO and we got into it, cause I made complaints by them saying we're using Roberts rules when we're not using Roberts rule. So I went to the lawyers and got clarification on it. So if this board want to use Robert rules, we should vote on it now for something you have not read and then we can adopt the Robert rules into this board. Thank you.
What is the majority of all neighborhood board, would I go according to what you just said?
I do not believe so, I'm not sure how this is related to um agenda item number seven.
Yeah, I know, are we allowed to change it based on what is the overall?
Uh. Like I said, I think Mister, my interpretation, um just my interpretation of Mister uh Franklin's comments is that this is the about about committees and committee reports and subcommittees, that's that's we can address that at the next agenda item.
No, we're here.
But but this is just to keep the order of the agenda, which it seems like I haven't heard any uh comments or any, nobody seems to want it, is everybody seems okay with the current order of the agenda?
Um, comments. So basically having city monthly reports, fire department, police and board alarms find the beginning. Most boards have it in the beginning, we could move it down for some reason, but it's nominally in the beginning, everything else is we can put in whatever order we want, like chair report higher if anything, board uh board business maybe sooner in um if that accommodates for Mister Tan, anything like that, so any of the items nominated on the agenda any order.
Are there rules on yourself, yourself?
Uh, I I I can follow up, but I'm.
So let's put that on the discussion the next slide.
Yeah, okay, um but but yeah, Mr. Franklin has handed the order, now we can just call, we can just call the question and vote on this item agenda number seven.
Oh, yes. Okay, if you guys are okay with voting on the regular orders for now, city monthly reports and then um and then the, oh, someone has.
Yes. Okay.
Uh, but basically um board business is towards um towards the end with committee reports um and announcements towards the end, if you guys okay with that order, um we can vote for that, I think you're abstaining. Oh.
Oh, I did, I we can just do.
Oh, just an overall, okay, is everyone um in agreement with the order of the agenda?
Aye. Yeah.
Aye. Aye. And me and uh Mr. Franklin.
Yeah, uh I hear you.
Hear no objections, um on on our, okay, then we can do an overall on
Yes.
Word up option, um agenda option number seven, and then we'll move on to number eight, which is establish committees, subcommittees and their membership, um uh this is where we can talk about that, um every committee report.
Yeah, so um that one to um um how I'm interpreting uh Mr. Franklin's uh comments, uh rightfully so that um uh board committees, um there you you can certainly have committees, but they definitely need to follow um the same sunshine law and Roberts rules procedures as the regular board meeting, meaning that you do have to meet regularly um each month or I guess at a certain time, doesn't have to be every month, but you have to meet regularly, it has to be open to the public you have to publish an agenda for every meeting and you have to record minutes and um and it would be entirely the responsibility of the committee to do that, um the neighborhood commission wouldn't um provide any uh extra resources for that like we do for the regular board meeting.
I have a question for you after meeting.
And then, yes, and then Mr. Franklin.
How can, you know, like for example, if you create a meeting, can any one of the board be a co-chair or co-chair of the meeting? Like for example, if if I choose um our our chair person, would they be able to be part of the committee?
Yeah, I get.
Or or maybe even a co-chair.
I think I think we have to, again, I I'm not entirely sure on how to vote on the membership rules, whether it's the whole board that votes or is it's I maybe it's the whole board that votes on 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 committee memberships and leadership but but yeah, there is a it is a formal board business to to have committee memberships, yeah.
My understanding is you just have your chair or if you need two leaderships, two co-chairs and then members, right? For the committees.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So that's the only leadership there is, you you were talking about co-co uh, yeah, I know you said co-chair, but I think you meant vice chair.
I just wanna mean it's like, can any of the members, like for example, you're the chair and if I choose you, you know, to support
Yeah.
uh the committee, would that be a valuable, would that be uh would be would would that be a valuable form or is it can it be granted in that way? Or it or they cannot be.
Bullying your chair.
Yeah.
Um.
It might have to be open to the whole board perhaps.
Yeah.
But can they be become a a committee member, of a committee?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Uh, yes, and then uh Mr. Franklin, Mr.
Oh, Mr. Franklin?
Yeah, that's not my complaint, my there's a difference between holding a meeting, what you have to do by the sunshine. Yeah, that's not my complaint, my, there's a difference between holding a meeting, which you have to do by the sunshine law. And there's a difference between just telling the board chair whether you did something or not. What I was told that by the board chair, that we cannot tell her whether we did nothing or we didn't do nothing without having a meeting, that's not correct. What I'm saying is, if you have a meeting, you gotta follow all the rules. But if you simply did nothing all month, you didn't do anything that enhanced the community, you didn't go out and do nothing, why be in charge as chair? You should be able to tell the chair that you did nothing all month. I don't need to have a meeting or minutes or anything else or record it just to say I did nothing all month. That's what we should report to the chair, whether we have nothing to report or something to report every month. So, you either hold a meeting or you didn't hold a meeting. But if you hold a meeting, you gotta follow all the guidelines per sunshine law for holding a meeting. My thing is, we should tell the chair what we did every month, whether it's zero or we did something. So, the public can know whether we did nothing while we're in a committee chair. That's my point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Franklin, and does May have her hand up as well, Miss um, Lady Zula?
Yeah, I agree with um Mister Franklin though, if you are appointed as committee chair, you have to report to the chair whe- whether you have a meeting or not, or you have done anything or not um with your committee. I don't know what has been done um when I was gone, but before, when I was the chair, the chair of a committee should report to the chair of the neighborhood board uh whether or not something has been done in their committee, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, oh, Mister.
What what what, why don't we do that in this meeting, what why don't we report, what we need to report? There's multiple chairs here, why 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 don't we do it? Why haven't we, why why haven't we, can can we start today? So that we can move on from this topic, can we start today from each chair? To report what we'll be doing, I mean, the committee is here to hear what we're doing as, you know, part of whatever committee that you're.
It is coming up though.
Okay, okay, okay.
Uh if if you do have something to report, this is what we're requiring.
Okay, perfect, yeah, okay.
So, that's actually, um, oh, May, Miss Zula? Okay, did she know, oh, okay, if that was um.
Sorry.
No, no, thank you, um.
Oh, she's, oh.
Oh, did you had, sorry, did you have?
No, she just said sorry.
Oh, you just sorry, okay, um, yep, so the establishing committees, I'll make sure to, I do wanna see a list of all the committees, and it's nice to see everyone that is a chair and co-chair um in those committees, so we will add that on, so at least so that committee can see what committees we do have, right? Um.
Are we establishing new committees right now?
We will.
Um, I know you wanted to bring up the subcommittee, I just saw that that's a that's a thing, I wasn't sure if that was, but um Mister Sun, did you wanna bring that up?
Yeah, I wanna start a new uh subcommittee. Um our name doesn't matter, but I'm thinking Neighborhood Development Committee. It's uh, we're working with Kalii Palama, uh so this committee will pretty much cover all of Kalii. And we'll be focusing on the good things in Kalii, so and supporting both boards at the same time. So, things like food drive, back to school uh 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 supplies, the supporting the Kalii parade, um uh supporting businesses, helping out with basic Kalii when it comes up. Um all the good things that are in Kalii. And coming up with different ideas, I was talking to Barrington High School about doing uh an award ceremony at the end of the year for all the people who get honor roll and academic awards and uh how we're gonna do it and uh and not only them, but maybe even the elementaries and middle schools. I don't know how big we'll take it, because it's gonna take a lot of people. Uh but just talking and uh talking about the good stuff, right? And then Kalii Palama, they said they're gonna start work, uh they're gonna focus on gambling houses, you know, the uh gangs and all the hard stuff that, you know, um I don't think that we're really equipped to handle, but you know, we could handle uh the good stuff. So, we're gonna tackle Kalii from two different directions. And we got the, I think the easier side, but the more the community uh outreach side of it, uh not outreach, they got more of outreach, but you know, more celebrating Kalii, who Kalii is. You know, working with Chris at top maybe writing an article about the history of the Kalii, you know, with the Bubba. Write an article about the valley, and then Palama area, you know, businesses, find out who's the oldest business, you know, history, you know, things like that, then that is a community reports and and. Everything that's good, right? And that's what I wanna uh start and looking for a a co-chair. Something I think the community can get behind.
Yeah, so what he was describing, I thought that could be under Communications Committee, so that's what I thought. It could be a subcommittee under Communications, um the Neighborhood Development Committee that Mister Sun was proposing. Um can that be a, I look, is basically adding that subcommittee?
So, retain all committees and add a subcommittee.
Yes, um is that is that okay?
Hmm.
Unless you, Mister Rojas, yes.
Like I think we should, next time we should write it down, so that way we can look at it, not just talk about it. Uh that way we can define it, because there's so many things that is involved in a community. I mean, like like he mentioned about, you know, like histories and archives, um he mentioned a lot of, you know, getting.
I have no idea, we we gotta we gotta work on it.
Well, that's what we gotta work on.
But what I'm saying is, I would, I would like to start this committee, right? And then we could, you we as the board could decide what we're gonna work on, I have no idea.
Yeah, so it's just a brief today then?
It's a brief, and I think, you know, should start something like this, right?
So. What, put it on writing, and then we'll talk about it, and then we can introduce it to the, to the neighbors.
Yeah, so we can actually table this specific item for the next meeting, yeah.
Yes. Exactly.
So that way we can like, um, if you wanna have it in writing as well to like, um, flesh it out as a committee, um, that would, yeah, if it's a.
But yeah, you can call, like, hear your objections, we'll table this together.
Okay, am I hearing any objections?
For this subcommittee.
To 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 vote on the subcommittee committees and we'll table it for the next meeting.
Yeah, table it for the next meeting, and then put it in writing, so that way we get something to um see.
Yeah, we will, yeah.
Okay. See, yeah. Yeah, yeah, so I'm generally.
And then that's, you can hand out to um whoever's in the neighborhood.
Yeah, and then the next agenda, I'll actually, I'll work with um Mister uh Brandon start to have the list of all our committees as well as the chair next to the committees.
Our chair got a comment.
Oh, yeah, on the questions.
Oh, no, that's that's glad, I'm glad you you tabled it because it's been an hour now.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
So, we haven't even got to the rest of the agenda, and all these residents have concerns about it.
Yeah, I know. Yes, okay, yeah, so we will table this for now, and we'll move on to residents and community concerns, three minutes each, um few minutes. So, are there any uh residents or community concerns at this time? Online or in person?
Oh.
Oh, yes, Mister.
Oh, I do, uh it's, it's one of our our parishioners, uh they have a concern uh where she lives. It's on Violet Street, but it's where the where the bridge was taken away because of the river, you know, over there, but there's a light pole in front of her house that's covered with a lot of the the trees and so forth, and so it's really dark in her area, so she's concerned because there's a lot of activity that's happened around her area at night, and she's she's about eighty plus years old, and she lives by herself, and so she's concerned about it because there's the lighting, it's not brightly enough for her to kind of see what's going on in her street. And so she just wants to know who oversees that that lighting, which is kind of like by the river area. Is that the city, or is that the state? Because right now, the tree is leaning over and is leaning over the electrical wires. I've said that team falls, like who's gonna be the person to kind of fix it up and and so forth to that, so her concern. Uh so they give me the address, so I just kind of pinned it, it's uh sixteen oh five Violet Street.
Violet?
Violet.
Yep, okay.
Because it it splits up into, because the the river is right there. So, Violet goes one side and the other side, so she's on the right side of that Violet Street, right by that Portuguese cemetery that they have up there.
We can put this on the mayor's report, and you'll get a response next one, thank you so much.
And it's basically the tree that's causing this back?
Well, it's blocking the the streetlight.
It's blocking, okay.
It's a streetlight, but it's where where it's at, it's like in the river. So, we don't know who oversees it, but then the tree, the the streetlight is covered with all the vines that's covering it, so she hasn't had anyone to come in and have to take a look at it or trim it, so they can get lighting.
So, it's a good trees, not control, is that so? Okay, thank you so much, um are there any other residents or community concerns at this time? Seeing, oh, we have one, oh, yes, you can come up and um speak your name. So that we can.
Oh, sorry, I have a.
And you can um, or you can sit on that chair, is that?
Maybe do a T T.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes. Other one, yes.
Okay, um I have a concern in the community, and it has to do with the new administrator that is at Kaitai Elementary School.
Who did your name, sorry?
Oh, Natalie. And this has to do with the new administrator that was brought into Kaitai Elementary School uh this past school year. So, she was there, she started in twenty four. Um and uh but I've I've had at least seven different administrators over my thirty one years of teaching. But this administrator, when she came in, I thought that um you know, when you establish new working relationships, you can agree to disagree if that person is mentally mature enough to grasp the concept of a different perspective. But because if not, then there's absolutely no point in in continuing. But I found this person to be a poor communicator, and it's not because she has English as a second language. She's been living in the United States for many years already. Uh but you know, every dis- not every disagreement is uh worth energy, you know? And my experience with this administrator has been, no matter how clearly I express myself, she isn't listening to understand. But she's listening to react. She will ask a question, but as you start to respond, she has already dismissed what you have said by saying, that can't be true. Start disagreeing with you or talks over you. You're interrupted, never finishing your response. By her saying, that's not true, it's a direct attack on my integrity, you know? Uh it's calling me a liar before even completely hearing what I have to say. Uh she has her own perspective and agenda, and at this point, it doesn't matter what you have to say, she's unwilling to consider another viewpoint. For example, the amount of jobs she assigned and reassigned for others to me change on a daily basis. When I finally retired, the the jobs that she had wanted me to do, there were now five people doing that job. Two part-time techs, one full-time substitute teacher, and two teachers who took one program each of mine, which I had about seven to nine programs that I was in charge of. But now there's five people doing my job, and she thought nothing of one person doing the job. Um when I expressed that this was an impossible work schedule, she was not interested in my response. I had explained to her that forty-five thousand dollars worth of equipment and resources were ordered and received for the STEM and literacy program that I was to teach and set up. Instead, I was told I wasn't to touch the resources, the resources were left in boxes and untouched. Is that three minutes?
Yeah.
Okay.
This one, yeah.
Oh.
Like.
Three to five.
We got five.
If you looked around, yeah, oh, okay, yeah, there you go.
Oh, yeah, one.
So, I was like, can hear more?
This is the knowledge of how funds and budgets, policy procedures work in the DOE. She wants everything brand new, she'll assign you to pick up meals and not arrange or provide the funding, so who pays for it? You do. And surprise, you know, maybe you get paid in thirty days after the DOE reimburses you, that's if they feel that they can reimburse you for that. Um you may not be certified in a position, but she'll give you that position anyways at the school. Um you should have certified people in those positions. Now, found out, if you're not certified, she will send you to classes and get you certified, but that option is not available to everybody. It's only available to certain people, yeah. Uh she lacks integrity, she lies a lot. And and her words are just empty words. Passive-aggressive style leadership, it's detrimental to the morale, productivity and overall organizational success. And uh she will blame you without using your name, but you know, that's who she's talking about because of everything she has said already. Um she never takes responsibility for her decisions, she always says it's the CAS, the Complex Theory of Supervisory, or it's because of teachers, it's never because, you know, I feel that this is the best way to do this, no. Um She will use peers for coercion, she tried to use peer pressure to influence or control my work nature, so I would do everything that I was assigned to do. So, an email was sent out and and told.
We are.
Oh, okay, so um basically, you know, this person does, this administrator needs more experience. She needs to be sent back to her VP position, but the mentor, she's had a mentor for the whole year, it's still not good for the school and the community and the kids, and the changes that she's bringing about at that school. They have to really think about who's good for this school and who fits best with the kids.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, Mister.
Kathy.
Yes.
Is there anything that we could do to that your office could do to help us in that school?
Um so, I have a few questions, oh, so my name is Kathy, I'm from Senator Kim's office, um some of it, what you're talking about is definitely HR issue, which would have to go through, and um I'm not sure, are you part of the union? Yes.
I, I did go through the union, the UNICEF went to talk to her.
Okay.
She was unwilling to compromise.
Okay, because as a little.
And and um what he what he said was, it's an unreasonable workload.
The union, yes. That represented for me, okay.
Uh I ended up going to the doctor, the doctor also said it's unreasonable what she's asking. For example, how come now you have five people doing my job when you were just telling me to do it, you know? And this is, and I'm saying that, you know, other programs are gonna suffer because not able to do that.
Well, we can do, we can discuss more about this offline, however, um just in um a lot of the issues that you had brought up, that strikes me as, um you know, definitely union related issues because it has to do with your overall teacher, um internal school issues, technically legislators, they will get involved in HR matters, however, um it sounds like there's more to, you know, you, so we can discuss offline, and we can provide you with resources
Oh, there's, yeah, it's it's.
of who to contact.
Oh, no, I'm retired.
No, 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 um I'll, you know, this is like how you're saying affecting the community where it comes to programs and students.
It is, it's programs and students that are going to lose out because she is cutting a lot of the cultural programs that were put in place.
Good, cultural programs, um that has.
Hawaiian.
Yeah, that that has been going on in another complex as well.
Yeah. Yes.
And so, um yeah, like I said, um I will give you our office contact number, um you did take a newsletter, which I left at the table here. Um Senator Kim's contact number, her office number is on there, I will personally give you my direct line,
Yes.
and then you can contact me, and we can talk more offline.
Okay.
So, our office will handle, I'll take the lead on this.
Thank you.
Oh, another. Okay, um Mister Rojas.
Sure. Yeah, you know what, um as she spoke up today, um I think to me, if it impedes our the community interest you know, in our community, I think we should be concerned, you know, um but the way she explained it, I mean, we need to do more. So, is there a way we can bring DOE over here and also a principal, so that we can, or the administrator, whoever is the administrator, to really figure out what is, is it affecting our community interest overall? That's that's what I think, that's what I want to bring up.
Actually, one of the things that I wanted to do was bring the superintendent of the complex here instead of a principal. And using my committee, subcommittee, and using that because I want to get into the schools also, committee outreach. And using that subcommittee, talking to the superintendent and making sure that whatever we do is good. And then during that meeting, we're also asked about.
I guess the the main, the main, um, biggest part here is, you know, as as neighborhood board, we we will be, um, concerned about what what's gonna impede our community interest. You know, based upon like, it's a school and she's a teacher. So.
Um, I see Mr. Franklin as well, if you would like.
Yeah, my question is, this is gonna be an HR matter no matter what, and we're gonna be punching above our weight here. We're talking about lawsuits and and things of that nature, uh, uh, that we gotta get into. Apparently, this is a big HR thing. Uh, she's saying her principal is incompetent. And she have already spoke to her unions and she already spoke to DOE regarding this matter. I don't know how we are supposed to bring as a board, bring in a principal, bring in DOE and talk to them about their hiring principles and what they're supposed to do as a board. I think we punching way above our weight with this one. Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Ohas.
Yeah, I I think it's because, you know, as a community, right? We're gonna need the people who really belongs to that community concern. So if there is something like that that arises, like number one is she's one of them. So if anybody else that comes out, it's still become a community concern. That's how I'm I'm seeing it. I'm not, we're not, I'm not putting it to a part where it's gonna be HR. You know, who's gonna be responsible for it. I, in in our, um, in our level would be the community concern and what impeding our community of interests, yeah.
Yes. The problem is, is that you're not gonna get the other teachers to come out and speak. You know, I I'm retired. I have nothing to lose. Those other teachers, they're gonna face retaliation, they're gonna face being blacklisted. They're not gonna come out and speak freely how they feel.
And what about the the student's parents? Do they see it when they, you know, or do they experience that? I mean, that's the community, that's the.
Right, right.
I. Then Mr. Opati as well.
Yes, um, I think we already have an answer. She answered to the sideline and not saying that the air concern is, uh, not important. It's just that there's other people that also wants to share as well, yeah, and so, uh, you know, we we have some, we have an answer. I I agree with you, we got it. But, um, last time we had a meeting, we finished at eleven o'clock. So I just wanna remind everybody about typing.
And the office line.
Hey, just a comment, and I think, Kathy, if you find out what is the the next, uh, avenue or your investigation and your response, you can use that and I agree with Mr. Franklin. The thing is, you know, within the state's, uh, department, uh, manpower rules, you know, so like true HR. So you, you know, you follow up and find out what is the recourse that the neighborhood board can take. And then then we can move from there, but until then, we just kind of speaking our opinion, not gonna hold too much weight.
And that's.
So we can await your report.
And that's what I was gonna say, if I follow up with Ms. Long and then find out more, we can get the whole picture and we can figure out the ways that the, um, state elected officials can help, you know, how Senator Kim could work the DOE. Um, when it comes to HR, you have to remember, right, um, no matter what's said here, the other side has their story as well.
Yeah.
And so that is, you know, you cannot, that's why HR matters are confidential, right? Not to discredit yours, but.
Right.
And also to add to Mr. Sung's point and, uh, Mr. Ohas's point as well, is that Senator Kim does have plans in the works for, um, involvement with, um, you know, DOE. And so you probably hear that within the next coming months. And so, you know, we ask that EB patient and, you know, that is definitely something that's on her mind right now. So we'll come out with more details about that.
Thank you.
And then, actually, because I understand, um, Kathy, you have the lead soon and.
That's fine, Chair. It's just keep carrying on with your beginning, yeah.
Um, because I, you don't understand me to have more community concerns?
Of course, of course. Yeah, I'm fine with that, yeah.
Okay, okay. Is there any more, um, community concerns at this time? Okay, if, um, there are.
No, I just wanna say that I wanted to thank Mrs. Long for coming up today. Because I myself have worked at that school as a volunteer. And not to belittle the administrator, but I have also seen what the effect that it has on the children and the lack of activities that have been, activities that have been canceled that support cultural growth, hands-on learning. You know, our kids from Kalii are not like kids from the east side. You know, where they come from nice homes, a lot of them come from dysfunctional homes. And I agree that she coming forward to the saw the change and what the kids were being deprived of. And we never want our Kalii kids to be deprived of any activities, hands-on. You know, we have gifted kids as well.
Sure.
And so I just wanna say, thank you for coming out tonight and the supporter wholeheartedly. And we should proceed in the manner that's proper. Thank you.
And there are no more resident and community concerns at this time. We can move on to certificate presentation. And I had Mr. Sung to, um, introduce us to Yun Ping Wu, who is here today.
I would like to introduce Yun Ping Wu. She's a resident of Kalii Valley. She just graduated this year. She was valedictorian at Lu Kili High School. She graduated with a four point one six, uh, GPA. She got the Quest Bridge Scholarship that gives her four year scholarship to Stanford University where she's done.
She's gonna be major in bioengineering or biology?
I'm thinking of bioengineering. I'm open to it.
And with a, on a track to become a doctor. She, uh, also, I had a whole bunch of things written and I left that at home, so I didn't. She is currently a dental assistant. She participated in the robotics club. She was the team captain and operator. She was also qualified in HIPAA, first aid, CPR. She participated in, um, oh, Kathy did it. First generation Chinese from Fujian, China, resident Kalii Valley, uh, and oh, she's a volunteer at St. Francis Hospital and University of White Cancer Center for, what was that one?
Um, I did a research project there and then I also did.
And many, much, much more. But she's representing Kalii Valley. And, yeah, so I thought it was a big deal. We also have these certificates. Mr. Santos says, grace us with his presence.
All right, well, James, uh, James actually basically read the whole certificate. Noting that we've, we spent a lot of time on other matters today. I just want to say how impressive, um, your resume is and your trajectory is and, um, you know, you've got a whole long career and life ahead of you. And I I think I speak for everyone here and everyone in the community. Really excited to see all the amazing things you're gonna do, not just at Stanford but beyond. Um, whether it's in medicine or engineering or any other field that you choose. So you have a certificate that's signed by all nine of the state health members recognizing this. And, um, when you cure cancer and do other things, you're gonna have lots of other certificates for you too.
So you accomplished all that, and you just graduated high school.
Oh, crazy. Would you want to tell your ghosts to your parents?
Oh, yes. Thank you, parents. Amazing, amazing.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You're gonna teach us how to raise kids. We need help. Oh, you got secrets.
Chair, my my only concern, why she went McKinley, she never went to the best high school.
There you go. I think everybody has covered. I'm Nadia. I'm the representative of Hasi's office. Um, representative couldn't be here today, so I'm here. I have to present the award certificate on behalf of the House of Representatives. So here you go. I think that we've learned so much about you and your position and trust of young lady. And we're so excited for everything you're going to do.
Okay, and this is Kathy. I'm her loss, Senator Kim. And this is a Senate certificate with, um, acknowledging your accomplishments. So it's signed by, um, the majority of the senators from the Senate. And so we wish you the best and Senator Kim also wants to call a call, so she'll be happy to hear that. After that, she did wonder because she said Kalii Valley, but she said not Framington. So Senator Kim's a girl, so she was a little. That's on Senator's card, but she still did the certificate anyways. Congratulations.
And now, um, after this certification, now we will move on to city and state elected officials. We'll start with Senator Donna McHale Kim's office, Kathy Me first, because she requested to be, um, thank you, we're, um, reporting early.
Thank you, Chair. Kathy, um, here on behalf of Senator Kim. Um, she is away at a conference right now, so hopefully she will be joining you guys for the next neighborhood board meeting. Um, right now, um, I gave copies of the community bulletin in the front that has gone out. I don't know if you're on her mailing list, but, um, it was mailed out at the last week. If you would like to sign up, you can always contact our office, um, for the members in the room. Our contact information is on there. One of the updates I wanted to, I know there there was, um, you know, limited time on here, so we'll kind of move the meeting along. Um, just if I can add, Board Member Franklin, um, I've been trying to get in touch with you about the La Maile Street issue and the Leke Leke Highway, um, traffic lights that you had brought up, I believe, back in May or April. So if you could contact me from the office, there's some follow-up that we need to do on those two issues.
Yes, uh, if I can speak. Uh, yes, they had it on the news, the issues we brought up with the Leke Leke Highway and Allen and, uh, and, uh, uh, Ross was there and, uh, they're gonna change the signs. They're gonna, they're gonna take care of the speed trap and change the signs to thirty-five. It was just on the news. You can ask Allen here. He was on, they were sending. They were both on the news last week saying that they was gonna change that matter. And I apologize, I've been in like four different states in the last month, so I'll contact you tomorrow, I promise.
Yes, because there was actually something that I wanted to follow up with you on another part of the freeway because we had a resident that brought that up about, um, like you said, a potential speed trap. So I wanted to, um, you know, pick your brain about that as well. So if you could contact me in the office to shake that. And, um.
I will, I'll let you know.
Okay, sounds good. I look forward to hearing from you. And, um, just to follow up, in the previous meeting, um, there were some concerns brought up about the rec center at Kalii Valley Homes. And so Senator had, um, from our understanding, the timeline, there was no delay or, um, maybe due to a construction, it sounded like the, um, the construct, there was, um, portions of the rec center, um, the design and planning portion. So, um, Ben Park from HPA, HPA is on the Zoom now, so I was hoping to loop him in. That way he can provide, um, you with a more, um, updated, you know, updated timeline and providing a question. So, um, I will turn my time over to Mr. Park if that's okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Mr. Park. Yes, you can hear me.
Hi, everyone. Um, congratulations, Chair Lealoha and all the rest of the officers. Um, you know, I really believe in public service and you guys are really doing a good job. And thank you guys for your time. So I I do have an update and I did tell the board that I would bring an update to you and I did have one. So just to let you guys know, um, the last time I was there, I did say that, you know, we did get the funding for the demolition of the community center. And, you know, it's our federal property, so it's gotta go through the federal process. So I just wanna elaborate more to you on the federal process that needs to be done. Uh, so we have to go through, um, HUD, which is the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. It's it's called a demo dispo application. And I can, I can provide you with, uh, the checklist of what needs to be done. Uh, but some of the larger items are cost estimates, an environmental assessment, uh, governor consultation, uh, community meetings, construction drawings, board resolution, and a demolition justification and description. So we we have, uh, Richard Matsunaga and Associates, they, uh, they won the bid for the the project. They were selected a couple of months ago, maybe more than that. But, you know, we've been waiting for, uh, the Department of Budget and Finance to release the funding. Uh, but all in all, this environmental assessment and, uh, these other bigger items, it's gonna take about six to eight months. And so we're looking to have, uh, community meetings within the next four to six weeks. So I have, uh, you know, some documents that I can share with you, Chair Lealoha and the board about what needs to be done in our section eighteen demo dispo application checklist. And I also have the scope of work, uh, that needs to be done by our consultant, Richard Matsunaga and Associates. So that's that.
Thank you so much. Um, are there any questions or community concerns at this time, um, other person? Or Mr. Oh, um, Mr. Franklin?
Mr. Parks, what we're just concerned about, this project's been in the works for over ten years. And, uh, from what I'm hearing now is that you have the funding to tear down the building. Do we have the funding and the designs to rebuild it?
It's a good question, Mr. Franklin. Um, just to let you know, we have the money to bring it down. But we don't have the money to design and build a new one. That's gonna be coming in a request, uh, to the legislature, uh, through Senator Kim, um, through Rep. Hasi. Uh, this would probably be in the next biennium, uh, maybe next year, actually, next session for design money. And then the following year, the next biennium would be for construction funds.
So my question is, we looking at another three to five years before we rec center built there?
Yeah.
That was my question, yeah. Because in that community, there with this, with this community building down, there are no activities, uh, basically to do anything, no organizations, no activities, which brought this to the board attention anyway. And when we found out this project's been over ten years and we're just getting it started, uh, that was the, that was my concern and the board concerns with this project. And now we looking at another three to five years before the people in the community even have a center to bring them together and and improve their quality of life.
So we got the appropriation from the legislature, I think in two thousand twenty-three. So, yes, uh, it's been a long time to get a new community center. Uh, we just recently got the funding a couple of years ago, so we're moving forward.
All right, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Are there any more questions, Mr. Kalai?
Kathy, you know, uh, hearings or informational meetings for the community, will the board get notified about that?
Um, you're talking about.
Sure.
Oh, yeah. Mr. Park, uh, are, will we be notified when you hold those community informational meetings?
Yes, I will inform, um, Chair Lealoha.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'll put it on the newsletter.
Sure thing.
I'll put a newsletter. If it's not in the newsletter in time, we could do like, uh, like last minute send out to, you know, uh, or just in the, the drive as well. I'll make sure it's in. Um, yes.
Uh, Mr. Park, do we know the location of the meeting?
We don't have it nailed down yet, but I'm assuming we're gonna have it somewhere on the property.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
And as guests of the HPA, we can invite you guys to come over.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Ross?
Yes, um, so when, so at this point, is there any alternative, obviously, what they're gonna do as far as when you tear it down, and is there any kind of plan where they can do an alternate plan?
For the kids.
For the kids, since there's nothing already that in place. Is, is there a plan or is there being a topic?
So at this point, um, Senator Kim is, that's definitely, you know, it is pretty much throughout the year, um, you know, that's something that's definitely on her mind about the youth programs, because that is an issue that has come up consistently in the neighborhood board meetings, um, and from constituents that have reached out directly to her. So that is currently something, um, I'm not gonna be able to speak on her behalf right now, but there is something in the works that she is planning as far as, um, engagement with the community. Um, what exactly it is, um, that would be best left for her to speak to.
Keep with that in your notes. So our next fourth meeting, we would love to hear an answer regarding, uh, the youth and the, you know, this. So there, there's five years till that's gonna be done. The neighborhood gym is all bussed up, so where are the kids gonna go?
Yeah, so you're talking about in terms of community, um, you, just basically youth outreach, community programs. Um, that is something that Mr. Song has also brought up, um, we took back from the last previous meeting about, um, looking at Big Brothers and Big Sisters. I actually personally called the, um, the organization after the meeting, the last neighborhood board meeting. Um, they were saying that there, it looks like the community members, it's something, it's not a state mandated thing. And so that would be something from the community that, um, members of the community would be able to reach out to. But they said that they were open to, um, opening a Big Brothers and Big Sisters chapter here. Um, I know that's just one portion of, you know, any kind of community engagement for the youth. But I think with this kind of issue, it's very difficult, a broad issue, right? Because, um, you could have, offer these programs, and there may be some youths that don't wanna do it. And so, you know, in that case, you can't mandate, right? But I do, and I believe, I can speak for Senator Kim when we talk about this, um, as she said in previous ones, that definitely, um, finding something or some kind of available, um, program for youths is definitely, should be on the table and should be, um, discussed. So, yeah, I will pass that along and hopefully she could speak to that at her next, uh, her next appearance at the neighborhood board meeting next month.
I have one.
Chris, the reason why is that funding, for example, there's YCA over here. I don't know if there's a fee for it, you know? Or maybe you could kind of like, uh, give them some kind of subsistence to kind of like go into programs. You know, I think that would help out. I mean, it's helping out our community.
So that is one of the things that is, um, basically as far as anything that Senator Kim can directly do, that is something that perhaps she could do in, through legislation. But right now, um, she as a legislator cannot direct an executive branch office such as DHS or, um, any executive branch to offer these kind of programs or the DOD.
But we can request for grants, right, as far as to, to provide, yeah, to provide. But for example, I'm looking at the grant aid over there.
Yep.
I mean, you gotta give to, to the, uh, housing to provide for, for example, uh, program for the kids. Since you're taking away, I mean, it's not gonna be there at all anymore.
So, um, one of the things is every, during every legislative, legislative session, there is something that calls, um, operating in grants and aid. And so those organizations here like Okua, Kalih Valley, La Makila Senior Center, what they do is they go and they apply. They, they actually go through all the legislative offices and they ask for grant aid funding. And so that is something that, um, our office can, um, you know, definitely help guide the people to put in those kind of, um, applications for that and, you know.
What I'm, what I'm asking for, I think it's, it's, it's like priority for those kids that lives there, you know? That, that kind of funding that I'm looking for, you know, that kind of program.
Of course. See. So.
If you could give the money, if you give the money to like KKB or other places, they're not gonna, they might reach out to them because it's a process, but if you give those, you know, if you give a requirement to those people who live there, they're gonna have to use it or lose it or someone who's there will implement it to use that, so that way they can get something out of it.
So you're talking.
While they're waiting for three to five years.
So you're talking about going from, instead of going to like an organization like Okua Kalih Valley and then just giving it directly to the youth, um, that would be something that we'd have to check and see. Because that's the thing, it's like, um, kind of similar to like, uh, non-profit organizations like the Red Cross, right? When there's disaster relief.
Yes.
Then it's like how it would go to like a BoFanny, where BoFanny would do it directly to the, you know, after the.
Or the state, because it's a state, it's a state, um, uh, location or it's a organization or.
The YCA.
It, no, I mean, I'm talking about the, the housing itself.
The housing.
You know, but the state gotta do something about it. They gotta give them some kind of.
When the housing, gotta get an organization get, um, administer the funds or something.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can give them direct to the residents.
No, I mean, it's, it's.
You want you an orgis- organization that can administer the funds, so we'll work on that.
Well, the state is organizing, you know, I mean, like they know how many kids is living there, who, you know, and each household, so, okay, okay.
Oh, we have also communities.
Five minutes is up, sorry.
Oh, we have other communities, uh, members that want to.
Yeah, um, so, uh, I know she mentioned about the Big Brothers, Big Sisters, but I think we should use our, our resources that's already in our community, like Okua Kalih Valley. Uh, they have programs, PACT, that has programs that, that works with the youth. And I know because, uh, Tivalema Watson used to go and she created the, the late night basketball for, for people like us that was living in Camp Four. Yeah, and so I'm glad, you know, Chris brought it up. There needs to be something that, you know, when you take it down, put something back up. The community already knows about demolishing the, uh, the gym, but they're not putting anything back up. And so that's upsetting former residents and current residents, because like I said, they're not reaching out into the, uh, to the Camp Four. KKB had a, a project, they were distributing supplies to Camp Four housing, but they weren't welcomed by those who worked in the office. That it seems like they don't want the people to get help from the outside community, which is like KKB and so forth. Because I was there helping set up, and just to see the, the office workers from Camp Four housing just not too welcoming to the organization that wants to help them out, because they're saying like, oh, no, we rather them go and, um, brandy themselves up and then try to see. But you know, there's community organizations that wants to do it, so why don't we just keep it in Kalih? Okua Kalih Valley wants to get in there, but Camp Four is not open to having them on their property to give. They distributed clothes, washers, uh, detergent, soap, whatever soap, to the community members. So I think you should look into them and see how we can work and partner with them to come back to, uh, Camp Four housing and help our people out, yeah? We're both from there. We grew up in there as, you know, so, so is Chris. So we're concerned about that as well. That's why we're sounding the alarm to the residents over there. When I talk to them, they say, oh, nobody told us anything. So I don't know what's going on in the office where as far as they have a display for like information and so forth and so. The gym going down, I think that's why Kaiba is like that, right? So there's nothing for the kids, and I know what he's talking about the kids. So there's literally no, nothing for the kids to do at Don Gym or at Camp Four Gym. And so Kaiba is gonna be like this, yeah? And so there's a big concern in that area that needs to be addressed.
Um, Ben, would you be able to speak to, um, uh, so sorry, Mr. Roraki? His comments about the, um, the office and them not allowing residents to come in?
Um.
I mean, they're.
President, but, um, sorry.
Most of our employees are kind of friendly, so I don't know if you caught somebody on a bad day or, you know, to make, uh, those types of, uh, to say those things. I mean, uh, I, I, I just wouldn't know how to respond to that, because, uh, like I said, still our staff are friendly, so, you know. I could talk to the property manager and ask them to smile more? I mean, uh, you're telling me basically that you had a bad experience with them?
Well, I had a bad experience with them. I mean, you talk about friendly. We're, we're all people from Hawaii. We know how to be aloha. Yeah, and we go and we hold everybody, we welcome everybody, we greet ourselves. Your people, whoever you're talking about, at your office staff, comes and they go straight to their tent and they sit there and they just kind of just watch you, you know, while you're sitting on it, right? No introduction of who's who and, you know, I'm here representing Arlie of the Mount as the chairperson for our council. I'm also with the Framington Alumni Community Foundation, yeah? And so with that, I'm trying to, I'll go and introduce myself, because that's not, that's a nature for us people from Hawaii. Yeah, we always introduce ourselves, right? And so I'm not sure if your office staff is trained that way as far as customer service.
Okay, I mean, I can ask them about it, get back to you.
Yeah, there's organizations that wants to come out and they've been told before, you know, they have to do it themselves. So I don't know what does that mean.
I don't know either. I'll look into it.
Yeah.
And now, do you have any more?
Thank you.
I have one more concern. I spoke to a parent today, and she works at Kaiba. And her kids all grew up at, uh, Kalih Valley. She said it's so unsafe now. The field where the kids play, it's overrun by, you know, juvenile delinquents and the kids are always told, uh, to go home early and not play outside. That's why what Mrs. Lama again was saying, if Kaiba can be also a place where they can be community activities or the kids are encouraged to do more hands-on activities during the course of the day. You know, because they're not getting it when they go home, you know? So that's, that's a concern, yeah. Thank you.
So, so the two programs that were canceled at Kaiba was Vex Robotics and a library. Rebuilding of the library.
Also restoration of the Kaiba stream. The whole year it was shut down. And a Framington student wanted to do community service, and he was told, you cannot, because the stream is shut down. So again, if these activities are not offered to kids and siblings, and it, it had proved to be worthwhile, it was going on for like eight years. So again, there's concern about why not have activities that foster or Malam, Malamada Amina, you know, getting the kids to know about the culture. And kids learn that way, hands-on. Not all kids learn with books. But if you take it the next step and give up, give them these hands-on experiences, then the learning becomes meaningful. And they look forward to coming to school. Right now, they have a problem with kids not wanting to go to school. Okay, thank you. I know my time is up.
Okay.
Oh, no, I got nothing. I, I was mainly to bring attention to you. No, I do wanna be aware of the time, that's all.
Uh, uh, ending, ending on a positive note, I just wanna, I know, uh, last meeting, we were thanking, uh, Senator Kim for,
Yes.
uh, helping us with the Kalih Valley community and whatnot, um, uh, great job. Uh, I also wanna recognize and big mahalos to, uh, Senator Donovan Delacruz, the chair of the Ways and Means Committee, and also Kurt Favilla. I, I used to work in his office, and both senators, both legislators were, were big roles in helping Senator Kim as far as getting funding for Kalih Valley. Just want on the record, state that we appreciate those legislators for helping us.
And I'm glad you brought that. That's another thing with the CIPs, right? It's kind of like you get a bunch and it's up to each senator to, or legislator to kind of go. It's not where you introduce it and you automatically get the funding.
Right.
So, Mr., unfortunately, there is a process and it's about pushing and, you know.
It's starting.
Yeah.
It's like the way we're gonna demolish that building, so started.
As Mr. Park said, that it's definitely, you know, now that we know that you can look forward and put this on Senator Kim's list.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I can see Mr. Franklin's hand up as well in line.
Real quick, I, I know we're pressed for time, we really need to move on, but, uh, what Mr. Rapati said, just for Mr. Parks, I did go into KPT and I went into Camp Four to try to figure out what organizations did they have for the children there. And it was appalling that the state provided zero community activities for them, zero, uh, leadership, zero, uh, just anything for the kids to uplift, empower them. And we're talking about the most disadvantaged children in our neighborhood. And I know that Kate, that, uh, that the director of, uh, HPA is, you know, that they're running, that they're pay organization to run that, that housing development. Uh, but what Mary Rapati is saying is that there are, not only there's not a rec center there, there are zero organizations, there are zero uplifting and empower organizations, there are zero community organizations, government organizations, anything to uplift even one kid to help him get out of those housing projects. That's what we're talking about. And there should be some program that's funded by the state to help empower children who we, who we believe are disadvantaged, besides just blaming them for all the crime in the neighborhood. So, well, uh, HPA is, the question is, are there any organizations, uh, that you have approved or encouraged or you have developed that helped them? Because the last member came to our board in November, and he said the most he did was offer them eight hundred dollars to, to organize themselves. And if you don't, it's on the videotape, you can go watch it, and that's his, that's what he said. We get, we provided them with eight hundred dollars to form any community, any organization they want, eight hundred dollars. Other than that, they provide zero assistance for them people to uplift and empower themselves to get out of there. That's what they're talking about. Thank you for the time.
Um, Mr. Zup?
No, no, I'm waiting for her.
Okay. I think, yeah, if there are no more, are there any questions or community concerns at this time for Senator Kim's office? If not, um, then I wanna thank you, Kathy. Oh, and thank you to the board for accommodating the time change, and then also to the board members, congratulations, and I appreciate your, um, hospitality every time I come and visit, so.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Up next is Mayor Riflanjari's representative, Fan Master Clark Wright.
And he's absent. I can read your report.
Okay, he's absent now, but we do have his reports.
Uh, yes, so, uh, Fan Master Wright said, yeah, he does have to work late tonight, so, but we do have the direct response to, uh, Mr. Gaddy's questions last meeting about the, the sidewalks and the lights. So, uh, both from Department of Transportation Services, uh, for the crosswalks, uh, DTS will be restoring and upgrading uncontrolled crosswalks on Kalih Street at, uh, La Miley Street with a new rectangular, uh, rapid flashing beacon, RRFB, uh, which will enhance, uh, pedestrian safety, uh, near Kalihuka and, and the community park. Uh, however, this project is currently in the design phase. Uh, there are over nine hundred miles of missing sidewalks. Um, and therefore, the sidewalks along Kalih Street are identified as a Tier Two project in the Oahu Pedestrian Plan in two thousand twenty-two. Uh, as such, uh, DTS will still need time to, uh, study, uh, the streets, uh, investigate, um, as far as usability goes on the project. And as about the lighting, DTS has shared the concern about poorly lit areas on Kalih Street to the Department of Design and Construction, uh, for their evaluation. Um, and finally, as a response to the suggestion about, uh, motion activated solar powered lighting, uh, DTS comments that the city, um, prefers the energy efficient LED streetlights that are photo self-controlled to turn on at dusk and turn off at dawn. These lights are connected to, uh, the HECO grid. Uh, the city's past experience is what solar powered lighting has not been favorable. The weakest component, uh, is the battery that stores the solar energy during the day. These batteries have prematurely failed and are costly to replace, and that's the report.
Thank you. And if we, if you do have other questions or concerns, um, you can, um, send them to Brandon and me or even, um, board members, if you hear word from other community members, feel free to speak for them. Um, but you know, you have something?
The clarification on the La Miley crosswalk at Kalih for school? Is that the erased crosswalk? Is that just a cross?
Uh, it says the, uh, it is, they're gonna be restoring and upgrading, uh, with a new rectangular flashing beacon, RRFB, uh, at the crosswalk. Rectangular rapid flashing.
So when you press it, like, then it's gonna flash?
I think they have one like that at, um, what is that, by Richies? Or by, on school streets, I think they have one.
Yeah. That's the one I, that's why I said that costs like a hundred thousand dollars just to install.
Install. So there is plans for that, though?
There is. Okay.
And Mr. Franklin, you have your hand up?
Ready?
President from the mayor, one on resolutions. I have a question. When the board, we're told at the board that we should write resolutions when we encounter a problem to hand out to different departments about our concerns. My concern is when we send a department like DOT or EOD, uh, resolution, uh, why are they not just to give us acknowledgement that they received it? uh why are they not just to give us acknowledgement that they received it? Right now, we send out a resolution like throwing it in the trash, you don't know if they got it or not. So if resolutions is what the board's supposed to write, then why don't they uh, why don't the departments that we send it to, we didn't ask them to do nothing, just acknowledge that they received our resolution, uh which at this point they do not. So we don't know if they got the resolution or they did not get the resolution. So we should have a confirmation that you at least received it, that's my point on resolutions, because we're writing them now. And my second point, if he's talking about our solar lights for Kaliauca Park, we did not ask for solar lights. We asked for motion lights, there's a difference. Motion lights work just like a regular light, you walk in front of it, it comes on. It goes off, it's nothing to do with solar. So those are my two questions for the mayor, if he's talking about Kaliauca Park. We didn't ask for solar, we asked for motion. That way, when criminals walk by, they get lit up and then they'll go away. Thank you.
I think.
Yeah, I think at our last discussion, it was about going up Kalie Street. Um so we, last time, it was a separate discussion. Uh, yeah, yeah, so not Kaliauca Park, that last time.
Thank you.
We're gonna still bring that up as well and have um have a good question to be answered the next meeting. Um but are there any other questions or concerns? Um again, you can also email us later, um if you get any questions later on, but we will want to Councilmember Tyler Dos Santos Sam, who is here in person.
Thank you, uh normally, uh normally Lynn is here, Lynn is at home and Lynn, if you want to uh give the report, feel free. But um you know Lynn's always here and she does a fantastic job and uh when Lynn is here, she really does a great job of representing. Um a few quick updates just from my end and I'm sure Lynn will have a few follow-ups. Um in the last city budget, we have three hundred fifty thousand dollars for the Ahiihi Street footbridge. This is the one that goes over Kamanahiki Stream, um between Nihi and Kamanahiki Street. Um the bridge has really been falling apart for years, but finally, the money's there. I sent in a letter to the Department of Design and Construction on July first, the first day of the new fiscal, you're saying the money's there, like get started using it. And they said, well, you know, it's only the first day, but uh it's just to keep reminding them to go ahead and use that. Um RPZ, this has been an issue discussed for years and years and years and it's finally coming this summer. Um hopefully, I think the mayor's rep might have a better update, but um we're hoping to have a process in place to have people get their RPZ permits, make it really easy for them um so that nobody is uh left out of that process. Last thing is the game room package was signed by the mayor last month. There are three bills, bills eleven, twelve, and thirteen, um all of which are aimed at cracking down on game rooms. One um gets DPP and HPD as well as the Fire Department and other agencies to work together to cite uh landlords who operate it. The second bill um allows HPD to act as an agent of landlord when there's a suspected game room, to help kick out the game room operators. Um and then the last bill, I, it's escaped my brain right now, but there are three bills uh in the package that um are intended to crack down on this issue. Um community members continue to report them in the district and I want to compliment HPD because they do a really good job um under Alika Watson over there, really utilizing all the tools available to go after the gamers in Kalie. Uh Lynn, do you have anything else to add?
Um, hi, councilmember and hi Chair and um board members. Congratulations to our new officers and a special hello to Neighborhood Board Assistant Brandon. Um it's nice to see you there. Um councilmember, maybe you didn't mention the one bill for the game room package targets the video amusement devices.
Oh, yes, yes, it requires all um amusement devices to um be registered, have a little tag. That includes the Fun Factory ones, the tags are free, but this also lets HPD um seize any machine that doesn't have a tag. So um if they go into an establishment and there's a bunch of these devices that are um gambling, uh simulating type devices, uh they can immediately seize them, which is very hard for them to do uh before.
And I just wanted, I didn't have any follow-ups from um the last meeting, but I did want to let board member Franklin know that I will follow up on our earlier request for those motion sensor lights at the Kalihuka Park. And if anyone has any other um community concerns, I won't say that I'll take them back to the councilmember, you have the councilmember, but I will absolutely and put in requests um to departments if need be. Does anyone have anything?
We can start with that, Mr. Lilimanga.
Thank you, um just to like a second, I used to talk to.
Yeah.
Um uh the two, Lynn, the repainting of the uh the lines, uh we, we still haven't gotten that situated with with from from Ono Restaurant all the way. You know, you know, the reason why I bring it up, because I'm tired of driving through Hawaii Kai, Mililani and all these neighborhoods have brand-new strip lines and stuff, but why we can't do that in Kalie Valley? That's what I I don't understand. And I, and I know you brought up about um you know, it's it's been put in, you know, we're just waiting for funding or whatever, but that's this is from last year that we've been asking for repainting lines and Waikiki has brand-new reflector lights on the road. Hawaii Kai has all these new stuff, but why can't, why can't we have it here in Kalie Valley? What's, I don't understand the 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 holdup and this is not towards you or or councilmember. Um the second thing I want to bring up is now we know that five years is in the waiting, three to five years in the waiting for the gym. I mean, for Cam Four, what are goals now for the gym? Uh I know Uncle Fatel was here last year and he voiced his opinion. What are we doing now to expedite that problem? Because I I I firmly believe that we need to have our meeting inside that gym, inside the the room, that that's where our meeting is supposed to be, right? So um you know, I know you're not a councilmember, uh so uh any updates on those two things? Thank you.
So, yeah, thank, thank you for your concerns and please never think that I take it personally. We share some of your frustrations. Um as far as the repainting, I can follow up again. The the request went in and the service request was was generated. So it wasn't a no, it was a, it's coming and and it is usually when, yeah, it says when resources are available. So we'll continue to follow up on that. Um I did fully hear all of the concerns about the the um youth not having programs and now knowing that um the appropriation is, you know, far off for even building that rec center. Um we did do a lot of follow-up after the site visit for the um the District Park Gym. We have um continued to stay on the Department of Design and Construction and the Department of Parks and Recreation to um ask about the status of um of those improvements. Uh the improvements that were were coming were things like the 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 restrooms and and drinking fountains and all of those kinds of things, so um as far as putting a new roof on, we were, um when we met with um the DPR Director, um you know, she fully heard it, you know, she she understood. They're looking at several roof replacements for many of the parks. That's the only update sadly that I have right now. I um, we also know that the the um ports need um wo- work. The last update that we got was that the motor for the for the netting, for the nets, the mechanical nets was coming. So, and we don't, so not to make excuses and I can absolutely go back out there. But um unfortunately, when we make these um requests, it doesn't come full circle and then the department reports back to us that they repainted the lines or that they um repaired the the mechanical um backboards or any of that stuff, so um I'll make a commitment to you now that next week I'll go out and kind of do another assessment to see about what improvements have have come. Um my only, and my, and I don't mean to get all up in your business, but my only um suggestion about having your meeting in that gym is that you allow for or plan for your teleconferencing. What you do have is built in in the space that you are right now is this teleconferencing, which allows for probably um more participation. And so um if you do go over there, I just don't, yeah, I just hope that um we might be able to work with you with parks or whatever to make sure that you folks will be able to get a a camera and and mics and, you know, some kind of teleconferencing system. So um um we share your frustration and it's been a long time and we should all be prioritizing um what we can do to support our young people who um we, it, there's a, there's a void, there's a gap there and um we need to support them.
And what what we'll do is, uh so we got an update um the other day um about all the CIP projects, all the capital improvement projects across the island. Um the Kalie Valley District Park ADA improvements, and I don't know what that entails, but that's just the title of the project. Um they reported that as ninety-five percent finished. I don't know what the remaining five percent is, though.
I think it's a roof.
So what, that's a roof, okay. Well, we're gonna clarify exactly what's contained in that and then what's outstanding. And we can report that back when we get response.
And she did say she's willing to come and join us and do an update. We just haven't coordinated the time and and the date. I'm pretty shocked for her.
Laura Taylor? The Parks Director?
Yeah, uh what, I'm always forgetting her name.
Laura Taylor?
Yes. So she says she's willing to join us, can I give us an update?
Great.
And Lynn, I'd I'd love to go with you whenever you do go to the gym, I'd love to be with you throughout that process.
Can can you please email me and then we'll find a good time to go together, maybe next week?
Definitely.
That would be great, thanks. That'd be fantastic.
If the two who wanted to coordinate that too, but I do see um Mr. Franklin has his hand up, that's okay. Mr. Franklin?
Yes, I would just say I would like to be included in that too, but I, for Councilman Tam, I, a quick question, I saw the law view and Councilwoman Codora wrote for parking, did that get approved? All the parking, uh I wish I had the number on the top of my head. And then all the parking violations and the uh you and her co-sponsored a bill together?
Was this for the restricted parking zone?
Where you can park, the time you can park, empty cars, having to be able to tow cars. I I I saw, but I don't know if it was approved or not. I read it online that you and Councilwoman Codora sponsored it together.
I don't recall, yeah, I know the the.
I think it was in two thousand twenty-three, you you co-sponsored that with her. I read it online about a month ago.
And that might be the restricted parking zone, we worked on that. Um I can't think of anything else.
I I think that was, it could have been it. Did it get approved?
Yes, so the the zones are coming. Um I mean, they're also ready there, it's just DTS needs to implement it and actually get the permits uh out to Wausau Street Kula Kulaa, um and Alhau.
Oh, all right, thank you.
Well, and we're reassuring board member Kumali one more time that no one will be blindsided, that we have a clear plan to um let the residents know with pop-ups and and we're actually gonna go door-to-door to give um residents a heads up. So I think what is um the last step, we're reviewing how we're going to um place placards on on vehicles. We want to make sure that that's optimal and that we have what we need to do that, so that's that's just the last step.
And Mr. Zup?
Uh so Mr. Hamilton or Principal Hamilton at Kalie uh Elementary, he uh is requesting to repaint the crosswalk at Kula Kulaa Drive and the corner of Kula Kulaa Drive. I have a picture for you, I'll leave it to you. Uh he actually goes in the morning and goes to uh Kalie Valley Homes and picks up all the kids and walks them to school, that goes to his school. And so they're crossing that crosswalk and there's no crosswalk there. So he's asking if he could have it re-painted before school starts.
Yeah, we can definitely get that on the list. I know that that one's often gets washed out, uh and I require a little more maintenance just because it's a kind of the bottom of that hill and it's a kind of a low spot. Um but yeah, we can definitely submit that.
And then also, I I have a hard time remembering her name. Radiant Court Garro, I know she's doing a whole bunch of things in Kalie Palama area. Uh and I was asked to coordinate with her, but whatever I coordinate with her with all the events that we're trying to accomplish, can I include you in on over?
Of course.
Okay.
Okay, no need, I I got it, I just submitted a screenshot.
Thank you.
So.
Nightfall, Mr. Ross?
Yes, I'm here, here, Councilman, thank you very much. Um I just wanted to make a suggestion, uh for the community. I wanted to um put help and support for the um Community Patrol because I realized that, I I mentioned this before to the mayor, our representative, but I didn't get any feedback this past uh feedback, this meeting. I mentioned it about uh uh Community Patrol, I seen that in Chinatown because I deliver produce at Chinatown. I think that's um, I think something to increase our security force for our neighborhood security, so I wanted to like to know about that, I know you know more about it and I think uh if you can support us for Kalie Valley.
Of course, yes, so starting a um neighborhood security watch is fairly easy, but you need five committed people. And to get five committed people, that really needs to be like ten people um to do this on a regular basis. HPD's uh Community Policing Team out of Kalie Valley is really fantastic. Um in fact, I think if they haven't been here in a while to give a little presentation about how to start a neighborhood security watch, I think that would be helpful um for the neighborhood board uh in the next few months. And I'm sure they would love to do that.
Well, Councilman, we do have a neighborhood security watch, um I'm the coordinator for Kalie Valley. But um since I seen the patrol, it's a bit way different, you know, they wear the uniform, um they have uh Community Patrol instead of uh Neighborhood Security Watch.
It's the same thing.
It's the same thing?
Same thing, they just call it that from whatever reason, so.
I like it because they do it um like, you know, a patrol style rather than watch.
Yeah, so I think that's a key difference is that if a group commits to doing it on a regular basis, that is walking around on a set route. Um the HPD Community Policing folks, they have a little bit of budget to help um get shirts, they do the same thing in Kakaako. But that again requires five people every week to do this.
Exactly, that's the difference between the security watch and the patrol.
Yeah.
Because the patrol is consistent.
Yeah.
That's what I realized.
And so we just need to find five neighborhoods, they don't have to be, you know, on the same street, they could be in different areas, but they meet up. You know, at Kaliauca Park and and walk around a certain, or meet at Kalie Valley.
We have our big place at Kalie Valley, so, yeah.
You know, um it's it's just a matter of doing that, so it's just getting five really committed people um each and every week.
We can start that?
Yeah.
And, thank you, and I think Mr. Repati.
Yeah. Yeah, um well, I just want to thank um Ms. Lynn for her support. Our parish, our dead mouth, our trash hasn't been picked up for the past um three to four pickups and so our our office clerk was very concerned about it and so we just had the last meeting that I contacted her and so she sent an email to whoever's in charge and they came to pick up, so I just want to thank her in this meeting to be on and I appreciate your quick um response and getting it done. Um also to Mr. DeSoto's because I follow you on social media and um you give a lot of good updates about what's what's going on and I'm happy that if we get ninety-nine percent or whatever to get approved from the rail to come to Kalie. And um I've been telling a lot of people about that, you know, because I did catch the rail, like the Bush has it, so I do appreciate the updates that you put on your social media, so we can understand what's going on in the community, so thank you for that.
Thank you, thanks everyone. Um and again, Lynn is is really great at reporting back everything to me and putting in everything into the system. Um but it's great to see all of you and um also, you, again, congratulations and thanks for sticking around and thanks James for pointing her out as at least shining star here in the community.
Thank you, thank you so much. Now, good evening. Up next on your agenda is Ipeka has worked, is it?
Uh.
Oh, yeah, yeah, because.
She just left.
Oh.
What, he talked to someone?
I'm on, I'm on.
So Ipeka, yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry that I can't be there in person, I'm traveling, I'm actually en route to Vienna to study social housing programs in Vienna. And I'm actually on the way to the train station right now, so I can, I could just I wanted to mention that I am talking to the landlord at the La'w Maile, you know, like we've, we've all been talking and concerned about the situation of uh the La'w Maile Kalie Street area, so I'm working with the landlord there to see if I'm trying to take over one of those sort of So I'm working with the landlord there, um, to see if I'm trying to take over one of those, um, sort of abandoned or under, unutilized properties. So we could set up a community space, like a cafe or a shave ice thing for the kids at Kaluuka, something like that. But the basic idea is, you know, because that area is currently empty, um, and it has a broken window. You know, it's, uh, it's sort of a, you know, it creates an opportunity for negative sort of, uh, influences. To have a place to hang out and to, to do things that are unsavory. And so my, my basic, we had a meeting about this a couple of weeks ago is, is let's, let's find something positive that we can have in that space. And try to turn that, that entire area around and make it more, uh, just, you know, a little more family friendly, more community friendly, community oriented. That's something that, that we're working on. Um, I, I'm sorry that I missed today's meeting because it would have been great to, to thank, you know, councilmember and, and others who are there in person. Uh, for, for their work on the, you know, with that, that bridge situation, uh, in the back of the valley. And all of the important changes that are happening at the city and county level, where so many of our concerns are located. Uh, so, you know, thank you to councilmember for, for all of that stuff. Let's see. The, the, the final thing is, you know, the impacts of the federal budget cuts. You know, we're still, I, I think the state of Hawaii itself is still trying to figure out what those impacts are going to total up, uh, up to. Uh, but I'm concerned that it will be quite large and, um, my hope is still that we have a special session. Sometime before this, this calendar year runs out to address, uh, those budget shortfalls. So that's, that's a really important kind of broad, big picture thing that, uh, that I'm very concerned about. Are, are there any questions?
Any questions from the board? It looks like Mr. Sun?
Do you know how much, uh, state collection of Medicare provider tax?
The medic, Medicare provider tax?
Yeah, we tax the federal government, uh, for the taxes that we tax the, the Medicare programs.
Yeah.
And so they're not gonna fund us on that tax that we're taxing the federal government.
Yeah, let me find that. I just got a re, a new report from, from DOTAT. Look, I, I, I'll have to email you about that, Jay.
Okay. So they're cutting that, they're also removing the, um, the illegal aliens receiving Medicare. But there's ten, uh, five million dollars for rural hospitals. So all our islands will still get, um, uh, funding for, on the Medicare side. And we only have one rural i, uh, hospital here and that's Kukuku on this island. Uh, there'll also be still refunding, um, for the hospital, but Queens and everybody else is out.
Right. Yep, yep.
Thank you, and then Mr. Ross?
Are there any other questions?
Yes. Um, yeah, I have, I have one. Um, I have a concern and maybe it's a suggestion, um, since Tyler, Councilman is over here as well. So you know those, um, properties that is abandoned and it's been, it's, it's being, uh, used by homeless individuals? Um, especially the one near the streams? Um, so the stream on your side and then since, um, Mr., um, Councilman is here. If you could, if you could do something about utilizing those, um, those abandoned, um, lands. If you could, maybe, I don't know, you could create like some kind of sustainability or we can grow something with the homeless. And then maybe you can provide, um, create food or some kind of bonding with them. If you guys could kind of like correct that, I think that would be nice. It would make our community look, look better instead of us abandoned.
It would, it would, but that's unconstitutional because that's, uh, we go, Fourth Amendment, whatever that one is.
Uh, my, to me, I think you guys could talk to the landowners, right?
They, they would have to, they would have to read through it, but.
Did you know who knew about it? It, I, I'm not saying, I'm not forcing them, we can ask them, that's what I'm trying to ask. Is there a way that we can implement or maybe just ask the landowners because it's been, you know, stagnant like that?
Simin, are you talking, are you talking about the area of, by Keely Way Street or you mean the area by where Christine lives?
Never.
Like, oh. Exactly, by where everybody pass by, yeah, next to the bridge. I mean, it's been like that for many, many years and I just thought about it. I mean, I, I think.
You, you should be happy that.
It's, it's, it's been.
No, yeah, but you should be happy because before all those houses were all pracked up. And crime and drugs and all that stuff.
Well, there's still people living there.
Yeah, but.
In, in the stream and also it's a sore town for us, Kalii Valley.
Yeah, but at the same time, there was crime was down.
Kalii, and all those other people passes Kalii Valley. And we have pride in Kalii, Kalii Valley, Kalii. So let's make it, uh, as a nice place where we can beautify it or.
Yeah, I agree.
We can use it.
I tried to find out who the landowner was, I couldn't find him.
Well, that's what I'm asking. Uh, Ika?
Yeah, you, wait, wait, hold on. Guys, you talking about the area with, with, with the landlord was gonna build, uh, houses and then now his, his boat is parked over?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I was just thinking about that earlier today too. I think that, I agree with Simin frankly, that I think that that's a great place where if we could get, you know, the city and county or a state agency or a nonprofit or something to pick it up. That would be a, a beautiful, like a park or something. Um, and.
It will add into your.
What's that?
It, it will add into your, um, community, um, you know, your, uh, as what you're working on, as, you know, making the community to be more kind of like, you know, open. And not just for the homeless who's kind of like taking over there, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think it would be beautiful. Yeah, we should talk about that.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe councilman, you and I, we can talk about that offline too.
Councilman?
Yeah.
Hello, I just wanna thank, uh, Representative Ika for that meeting that we had by Kaluuka across the, looking at that property and trying to see what we can do to liven up that area. So I just wanted to thank him for that, you know, for the, for that.
Oh yeah, absolutely. We gotta, we have to make that place nice and, and really work for, for the entire community. Yeah.
Are there any more questions, um, on my other person for Mr. Hussey? Seeing and hearing none. Uh, thank you so much. It's awesome for joining us while you're traveling. Um, have a good trip, um, and happy evening.
Thank you.
Or safe travel, safe travel. Uh, next on the agenda is Board Business, a, uh, Board Business Approval of Regular Meeting Minutes, Thursday, June twelve, two thousand and five. Um, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Moved by Mr. Sun or motion, uh, by Mr. Sun, any second?
Second.
Mr. Kumali, second. Are there any discussions regarding the, uh, last month's meetings? Um, notes, seeing and hearing none, um, we, um, yeah, we can just, is, is there any, um, no. Okay, hearing no objections, so I'll take that as an overall adoption of the regular minutes. Thank you, everyone. And, um, uh, next, I do see any committee reports or assignments, so if anyone wanted to mention anything, any plans about their committee. Um, you said that? Or is that not decided yet? Need to table this, uh, section?
Yeah, I guess what I heard, what I heard from, uh, Board Member Franklin was that he wanted specifically for the, the committees to, I guess. Identify themselves and identify whether or not they, you know, yeah, have a report.
So should we start today?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, um, for my committee, um, Neighborhood, um, for sustainability.
If you want to. Sustainability.
And also I wanted to, since we was gonna bring out, um, if we could, um, bring out more committees. I was going to incorporate it with the cleanup committee for, with the sustainability, you know. And then also I'm looking for a, uh, I'm, I'm looking for a co-chair, um, on my part. I need more help. So, yeah, that's, that's what I'm working on at this point. And we're looking towards, um, uh, getting more members. So I'm trying to gather all the names so that we can, um, call, call the, um, the policing team. And it's, and then also we have, uh, one announcement, um, there will be a cleanup in August ninth. At Kiliuhana and Kalii Street. We're gonna just scan it again with the E N B. So, um, that's part of our cleanup. Um, it's gonna be on the stream side and it's, um, coordinated with, uh, E N B, Kyle. I think it's, I'm not too sure with the last name, but I think it's Takura or Takura. Right. So, yeah, that's part of it for, for my committee.
So for your other committee, are you gonna write a report or paper for us? We'll get.
Yeah, so one, if, if I create a meeting, which if we had one before, uh, there should be a minute to it. Uh, as, as far as what, what the rule. So we're gonna start incorporating that. That's what I learned from today's meeting.
And I did wanna, um, ask if our, the newsletters, we could have like an advertisement for our committees, I can list them all there.
Definitely.
Yeah, we haven't put up the newsletter yet. I was actually wanting to like hear any new events coming, because I realize events they mentioned here, they come in like a week or two. So it'd be nice to kind of have that.
Yeah, and I'm not gonna communicate with him, just since it's a communication.
He's, yeah, everyone should kind of work with the communication committee, so, yeah, so we can communicate, yeah.
Oh, and then formally that, um, the, the report, the, the, the minutes basically would be, would be mailed out every week along with the regular meeting agenda. There would be a separate, um, agenda for each of the, the, the committees, um, yeah, and the, the minutes too. Every, every month. Yeah, or every, every meeting, yeah.
So reverse one to.
So I have a question on the, uh, Hussey, for example, if I conduct a meeting or I conduct a, um, uh, a process for a day. Um, and then I create a meeting here, to, who do I submit a me, a, a minutes to, that, the chair or?
Yeah, to the, to chair and then, it would have to follow the same guidelines that, you know, six days notice to the public, yeah, mailed out everything.
And then she was.
Like essentially what we do for the mail out now, but with the, the committees as well, agenda and minutes for, for a regular meeting, yeah.
To make it more convenient, if you wanna use this, um, location, we have to submit before the first Wednesday, so first Wednesday of the month. Same as what I have to do, first Monday.
Yeah, follow up with me then, uh.
And also you can have the meeting at, what are you gonna do, China or wherever they, they.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay, fine, just keeping the minute, right?
Keeping the minutes, yeah, like a record of who said what or, yeah. That one should definitely have record of who said what, because our meetings are recorded. So we can refer to the timestamps, but, yeah, the committee meetings should know who says what or what means. Okay.
And then I think I had a question for you, um, as far as like, um, neighborhood plan. You know, I heard it when you went to the, um, uh, the assembly, um, they was mentioning about neighborhood plans. I never, I've been in this office, um, as a member, but I was always, and my question was, what is the neighborhood plan for our neighborhood? Is it, is it a plan for, or a rule or is it a plan for the, the neighborhood?
It's, it's a plan, I think, to, as, to structure the whole block or process, yeah.
It's a structured plan, okay. They should have worded that.
Yeah, I didn't. Yes, okay, I didn't, they, uh.
That was a suggestion.
They meet once a month, uh, and then you're, you're able to attend that meeting virtually or a person, they meet here once a month. And then, uh, I see Mr. Franklin has handed up, but then he put it down.
Uh, Mr. Franklin, did you wanna add on anything?
No, ours name is, for time's sake, we might have tabled this, uh, until next meeting and get this all done because we're running out of time.
Okay.
Okay, well, move on to my, uh, other reports and chairs of production. We did wanna announce, because a friend of mine today sent me a text for an event. Um, it's actually called, um, Kalii Youth Creative Leadership and Invocacy Program. There are multiple dates from July twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, I think that's Monday to Thursday, then August second. But basically it's, you do movement, storytelling and theater. So my background was in theater in high school, so that's why I have this info. But you sign up, it takes place, I believe, in Koko Kalii Valley. So it says here, um, any youths aged thirteen to twenty-first, to twenty-one, who might be interested in exploring the Kalii verse with Teata Productions. Teata Productions is actually owned by, um, I forgot his name also, sorry. Um, but he used to be in T-shirt Theater, which was also in Kalii, so it has that same, um, uh, low-tech, high-zest, um, theater practice. But Teata team has been reaching out to all the youth nonprofits in Kalii. Those who participate receive a hundred and fifty dollar stipend, but must be committed to all days. So July twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, from two to five P M, and then August second is a performance from three to six P M. So they're also inviting the community members to come watch their performance on Saturday, August second, from three to six P M. Um, it's gonna be at K K P. Okay, so I guess that's also in Koko Kalii Valley. But that's what's upcoming in July as well as, um, I think I can announce this in the A D A, what is this called, the A D A, um, um, what is it? Because it was sent by the com, um, Neighborhood Com, Com, what is it, Com, Com, I should. The, the statewide Americans with Disabilities Act, um, it's a statewide rally, sorry, but it's on Friday, July twenty-fifth, twenty-two, five, from nine A M to eleven A M. At the Hawaii State Capitol, Ratzanda. And of course, and did you mention the Finafeyore?
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be August ninth.
Yeah, August ninth from eight-thirty to eleven-thirty. We do have a link for you to register, yes.
Oh, but, yeah, I think, um, at this point they're working on the flyer, so.
Oh, I thought you sent me an official flyer, didn't you? Finafey, is that it?
Oh, okay.
That is right.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, should I put the right?
At least my last message was, was it confirmed, yeah. Okay, that was, yeah, that's one, yeah.
Well, that's the one, this is one, okay, okay. Yeah, I got this today.
Okay, yeah. So we can put that on the newsletter, I, I, I'm really.
Yeah, I already put it in here, we're just finalizing it. And then if anyone here knew that wants to put their emails in, so we have you on the email list. And we can send it out like tonight or tomorrow. I do wanna get more people on the email list though, because it's still like our board member and like less than ten people. So, yes, um, oh, sorry. Did you have other dates for?
I wanted to make a couple announcements.
Yeah.
Are we in announcements right now or just on your report?
Oh, yeah, it was just on my report. I was just gonna report on things that are happening before our next meeting, August.
Oh, yes, I had it in my report there.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm, we're gonna get to the reports after I mention the announcements, okay? Just real quick. So I'll skip over my, um, I think that's everything, but announcements, I'll make sure what I mentioned is in the newsletter as well as in the, um, the drive, the Google Drive. But our next meeting is on Wednesday.
I think Mr. Franklin had a comment, maybe.
Okay, Mr. Franklin, did you have, um?
No, I didn't, I'm sorry, my hand was up. I'm, I'm, thank you, but no, I have nothing.
Did you have? No, no problem. Uh, Wednesday, August thirteen, twenty, twenty-five, starting at seven P M at Kapalama Hale Room One Five Three. Neighborhood Board Meetings air on the level of Channel forty-nine on the fourth Saturday of the month at six P M and the first and third Sunday of the month at nine A M. Uh, oh, and we just mentioned the August ninth Kalii Valley Street cleanup at the corner of Kalii Street and Kiliuhana Street. Are there any more announcements? Um, okay, um, Dana Yap?
Yeah, I want, my name's Dana Yap. I just wanted to see if you guys are still interested in the parade. So we're putting out the date of eleven twenty-eighth, it's a Black Friday, so it's normal.
So to update you, uh, Kalii Palama is gonna join us and we also invited other neighborhood boards to join us. Uh, was it, uh?
You, you, uh.
The fire department's also gonna join.
Well, fire, I, I've already had the, the fire truck.
Yeah, I, I asked, uh, for what supply, they wanted a little bit more information.
Yeah.
But we're, we asked them, and we're also asking the police department too.
Yeah, they're involved.
They're involved to jump in the parade.
Well, they, they actually.
Yeah, yeah, like to fight the base in, in the parade.
Okay, actually, yeah, yeah. We, yeah, we'll talk later, okay? The other thing is, um, when, this is involved at F C F to save the date.
Which is Frank's alumni foundation.
Yeah, Ferentz alumni community. Ferentz alumni community. So, we're going in the lines of getting more community involvement, so I wanna be good too. Um, because as you've noticed, I've been going to both Kalii Palama and Kalii Valley's Neighborhood Board Meetings in the past year and a half. Um, since our alumni are both from those areas, we wanna get the community involved and stuff like that. So the name, like Patti said, is Ferentz Alumni Community Foundation. The community part has been lacking in the sense that we'd like to get more of the community. And they go more on both sides, Kalii Palama and Kalii Valley. So on February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-six, we're gonna rebrand and relaunch, I mean, F C F. So include a lot more community involvement. And that's why we looking at doing it at Bishop Museum.
What's the date?
February twenty-second.
Well, that's next year.
Yeah.
We'll keep it detailed.
That, that's why we giving you guys a heads up. So how much involvement do you guys wanna be in, in that too? Because, uh, we haven't really, I, you guys getting a heads up, because we haven't immediate. Because uh we haven't really, I, you guys getting a heads up, cuz we have an immediate is next weekend with our alumni association. So that's where we are headed with this, but I just wanted to give you guys a heads up about where the organization is going. Patti has been doing his groundwork all out of organizations.
So Dana is actually our community director, which he didn't mention, so he's the community director, that's his job is to work five, so so.
So that's why I'm gonna be working with you, and then um.
You know where I live, right?
Yeah.
Or you remember.
Yeah.
Right, we'll have that conversation later. I know, I heard. I have a question for you, um, oh, if you know, um so for N C O, would they allow us to be involved in this kind of program?
Yeah.
You know what I mean, like participating to like.
Yeah, absolutely.
Like, you know, we we bring out N C, uh we bring out the neighborhood board, we get our banner, get in, choose our stuff.
Yes, absolutely. The that's part of our P R, that's what we we is.
Right, right, no, just asking for protocol already, yeah.
Right, qualification.
Not not only do we allow it, but we would absolutely encourage it.
Encourage you.
Yeah, and if you if you need some resources or have, please uh make the request to our office.
Yeah, for example, I will be requesting for pins or maybe like ribbons from you guys, that's your budget, right?
Yeah.
To pass out at their events.
Yeah, we'll see what we can do.
Yeah, something like that, okay, sounds good.
And then Mr. Ropati, do they want to get your hand up as well, no, okay, oh.
Oh, no, no, I'm gonna do my announcement, he's done.
I'm done.
Okay. Again, my name is Ropati Lio, I'm with Farrington Alumni, like Dana mentioned, also representing, I mean, the Mount as the pastoral council chair. And so the three announcements that I wanted to announce, and as I mentioned the last time, are these the Mount Church will be celebrating our hundred fifty fifth anniversary. And so I will be sending that to you to send to the board as an invitation to join us on the Sunday, um which is August. Sorry, August seventeen, that's the big celebration we're having at our parish. We will have the bishop of the diocese of Omadulu to celebrate, and so we would love to have our Kalih Valley Neighborhood Board um to be there to celebrate with us. But also our representatives, our elected representatives from the city and the state, uh yes, and so it it was emailed.
It'll be in the news.
And um after that, we do have a a luncheon, but the duty was this past weekend, uh yeah, we'd love for you guys to come and join us. Uh it's a Portuguese church, it came from the uh the Portuguese, it came to Hawaii, brought church to Kalih Valley. And our original location of the church is all the way up in the valley where there's um Ho'ulu Ainam, which is part of K K B. Um there's a cemetery after the Buddhist um monastery, and then that's the original location of our church in the region too, where we are now. The statue of Mary of Panamante, that's our, uh that's part of the church, which is our lead the mount. And so that statue came from uh Portugal, from Hadera, Omerors, and so it was shipped down to to Hawaii. Um but yeah, the second announcement I have is with the Farrington alum, uh Farrington High School. So August thir- August sixteen, Farrington will be traveling to uh Kapaa, which uh in Kauai. And so they have their football game that we're telling all the alumni there to come on. We'd love to see Kalih out there as well, supporting our Boys of Kalih. And on September nineteen, the Farrington Football Team will be traveling to Las Vegas to uh to play Liberty High School. And so we're also inviting the Kalih community to come on and show support uh for our our Boys of Kalih as well. Uh there is a activity that's gonna be happening in Las Vegas on October third. And this is um an Farrington Alumni um group that's holding this scholarship, and this is scholarships that we're gonna give to the students of Kalih. And that's what the Farrington Alumni Community Foundation is about, who are giving scholarship to students, and so this group is hosting an event up in the Las Vegas as well on October third. So um like I like I mentioned before, when Farrington Football Team does well, our community does well, and so it's good to rally behind our Boys of Kalih and our community, our our students. Because they'll see the joy and we will see the joy, and then we'll bring safety back to our community when we support our youth. That's all, yeah, last but not, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Oh, really, uh Koji. Uh Koji Shingon uh mission is hosting uh Bon Dance, uh July eighteen to July nineteen. Um both are between six P M to, I think, ten P M. And then G coin one one G is also hosting Bon Dance, also on the same day, July nineteen, from five P M to ten P M. Please, no questions, that's all.
Which one are you going to?
Well, well, July is the best.
No questions. You want to?
Can I answer that, no?
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Or some cardenas and tour, cardenas, is that correct, cards?
Yes.
Cardenas.
Cardenas or cardanas.
And then I think that is um everything on the agenda, but I did forget on my report to introduce, of course, our neighborhood assistance, since we are starting a new uh board. I, he was here last time in last month, so that's when we started, but he wants to talk with you, yeah. I'm receiving um Spencer, who's maybe still a assistant, but he got um promoted to other to other responsibilities, so he's our assistant.
We went from, we went from uh St. Louis to Good Hall.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, but I think, yeah, so that's everything, then I will adjourn the meeting now, now, thank you, everyone.
Okay.